No.
Oh.
I was worried.
Right. Yeah, that'd be so crazy.
I don't want to hear.
Um, because we have one for the nurse county. You guys have those accounts. There's one, the Lowe's manager was giving them. At a, for the discounted price. And you each do one for our next time one. So, Rachel was like, this is Louie.
Do we have to tell them? Like, do you have something?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot.
Because all we have to really do is.
Okay.
Okay, so you have that.
Let me work on that when we get done. I get done, maybe you'll do it.
He will be like sixteen months.
I have accounts.
Three kids at home.
I expect your department will be, your department will be, you won't. Your department will be.
Yeah.
Listen, I can sign it up, ma'am.
Don't tell him that.
She's just saying a good point.
I did you one.
You did.
No. Or maybe Kate's.
No.
No, you were starting out being married before I have danced.
I said that right here.
Hey, do you know that it's hard to not help me carry down all this paperwork?
Do you know, Kate? She did not ask me.
Yeah, I brought coffee.
Yeah, Jack gets everything approved. He brought me coffee.
That's good. That's okay. I know where to get sandwiches now.
Yeah, me too.
Tired of making jokes.
Absolutely. Tired of confusing math with people.
No, because I couldn't.
I didn't stop trying to.
Which?
Oh.
I had my freezer and then I had.
Why do we have a seat for you?
I had to be. Usually somebody has a freezer. And I might be falling out.
Okay.
So, we've got the following. System.
Actually, right.
I was waiting for the guy about the intro.
So, he's kind of. Two days. Definitely. Putting the back seal bars. Three days. Okay.
In the freezer. Freezing stone.
Because they offload instead of like the horse.
Yeah.
They are offload persons.
Hey Brad, can you hear us?
I can.
Perfect. Dave's not here yet.
Okay, this morning, guys.
Or Dexter.
She was fine there because of that.
We don't have to fall down.
So was I.
I was too. It's all the matter, too.
Yeah. It's finally, it's finally.
I don't want you getting lost.
All right, I've been lost before.
Brad, our product.
All right.
This is, uh, all the budgets by department. The, this is, uh, just a budget count of all the funds.
Three minutes tonight. I just wanted to discuss some of the planning.
Yeah.
Other business.
Yeah.
Ready business, monkey business. Monkey box, what do you guys?
And then this is, gives you like a rough estimate of what each department has spent of their budget this year.
That's good. She's gonna give me all those. I don't know about these chairs.
Okay.
They're ready, aren't they? You're very.
I like them.
When they say.
Listen, I'm not taking the tags off until you guys tell me I can, just in case you don't like them. Yeah. Not Kay. Were these the ones you were like? No.
I haven't played.
Oh, there's a talking.
Yeah.
Yeah. This is. So, what's should be right now, it's, uh, Captain Kelly.
I don't think. We, that's, that's.
So, who, so who bought them?
Oh.
I wonder if it's George. I wonder.
But we wind it out way. Um, so on the trip's term, they won't go much.
It's kind of very nice.
Why would it be first to?
He's the one on one. First up first.
Let's just do it.
I want to retire him for that.
Well, we, we leave it to you, sir.
Surely wouldn't be careful.
It's in your. Just want to let you know.
Yeah.
After this. I was saying that. The, uh, after this budget, budget. I told her, we normally leave it to you, sir. We should go first. I'm sure. Oh, they got. A minute. That's skill building. The clerks can talk about a project. Rather than that, that's what's going on. So, I would imagine in an hour.
Yeah, I just forward you, I forward you to saying all that you know.
I just wanted to let you know. Yeah.
Oh, that was from you.
There. I'll, I'll, I'll fill you.
What else?
Right.
All right, thanks.
Thursday?
Yeah, I'm saying.
Okay. We'll just go and talk, right?
About what?
I wanted to know.
Oh, that's somebody else.
Cause I.
Oh, they don't have a.
I was telling Rachel on the way in, anybody who's against the six hundred eight line going all the way through the eight. Well, how to. The only road that gets us into town having a freaking other stoplight.
Okay. I told the other brothers to do it, and I said, told the other departments that they can't be. Oh. All of the, you know, departments.
Do you read online?
So, hey Brad.
Hey, how's it going?
Good, how are you? Good to see you. Getting ready for fair?
Busy.
Yeah, between games and how fair, right? Um, we'll call this meeting to order with pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rachel asked if we could do the highway first. Let's go ahead and do that. Um, I'll just let all the office holders know. I, I thought it was pretty clear that the council was setting an expectation that we were going to go for a five percent raise this year. Across the board, um, so we were hoping that everyone would. If you've done in the past, submit your budget from the past, move things around like you need them, and then put the raises in, but. Unfortunately, there are a lot of budgets that did not do that, so we shall go through those. Here, here are very little remarks about it because this year, we've got a pretty good handle on budgets with this current household. And then we head. So. In eleven seventy-six verse. Brad, do you have all these electronically, um, with you, or would you like to have some kind of detail? Some of these?
I'm good.
So, overall, let's just start off with looking at the last page and let's just talk about the percentage that has increased over the prior years. So, your adopted budget for twenty twenty-two was just right at three million. Basically, you're looking at a ten percent increase. Is that mostly because of?
Uh, she did the, the payroll part of it is five percent. There's other lines that were increased. But the payroll part of it.
Okay, um, let's, let's move to eleven seventy-six and see what they've expended from their budget this year.
Yeah, let's do that one.
Budget status for eleven seventy-six. All right, do you have electronic access to it that we can get pretty quickly, or do you want to, do you have a budget status report quickly?
Yours is kind of hard to look at what they've spent.
Well, I wanted to see where they're at with gasoline, especially because that's a big, that's a big job.
The fuel, please.
Twenty-five percent increase.
We bumped it up to three hundred and fifty thousand.
See that.
From two hundred and eighty.
Right. Big job, so I mean, that's. Are we expecting a doubling in liability insurance due? Because I know it said before that a lot of people are doubling their liability.
And if fuel was two X fifty, you're thinking the, your prices going up so much. I think so.
I'm pretty sure, yeah. Okay, the, uh, so the increase in mechanics, like everything I'm looking at staff like nothing is one five percent, like maybe start to sneak something so I don't find it later and then we, we automatically. Okay.
Yeah, because they've increased their vitamintus service contract, uniforms, um.
I knew, we knew by two minutes was going to go up and we talked about aggregates. Now, the aggregates, though, you are going to start utilizing the semi more, you're correct, and not using singles and doubles to haul aggregates. So, let's try to focus on using that semi, right?
They had a big jump in the truck repair and repair road.
Okay, well, part of that was a deal that we made of just starting out with the lease program. We're not going too crazy on that. Um. I had trucks out of the gate. Commissioners were supportive of that. Um, why, what are you saying is such a, aside that, a large increase in?
I believe, from what I was told, that you guys pulled money back on those buying items in the past. Well, I mean, we have an aging fleet of trucks. I mean, the average truck is fourteen years old.
In two thousand nineteen, we had an E B holder fleet. I mean, we've still been increasing the, you know, our assets. In that area, just, you know, a three-time increase, like I said, without a budget status. How much have you used of that budget already this year?
Oh, we used sixty percent of it.
For one one seven six, the state hasn't come out with their S and A revenue for twenty twenty-three, so you can always, um.
Oh, yeah, we could, we could approve it and make it, come back to it. I mean, you know, I don't see anything that's far away off. That's what, that's what I was going to say. Because contingent, everybody's just going to be contingent with the raises, especially since people wanted things more than they wanted the raises after we said that we were going to focus on that, try to help people out. So, what we'll do is we'll dial raises back, you know, possibly, you know, blend that and try to make those things work, so, um. Does anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I just had a couple, couple of questions real quick. What, um? The general foreman's pay. Why was it so much in every, every, every prior year in this year it tickled a lot less? I know the other ones, and that can't be what the general foreman got paid if he did, we all be general foreman.
Um. Because they had more than one person.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, that's what I thought. Okay. And then the only other thing is, you said, what are we going to do about the liability insurance? Just wait and see.
Well.
I mean, we're not making this decision right now.
We raised, we raised it.
Hundred percent.
On the budget, because we've been pulling from it. It's been under budgeted.
But you don't have any existing lawsuits. I mean, that was mainly because you had an existing lawsuit, we've been paying out lawsuits. I don't think you have any major lawsuits out there now. You could, I mean, you can take it back down to fifty thousand.
I'm just asking a question.
Do you want to make a motion to accept this minus fifty thousand and we'll.
Because you, I'm pretty sure we've spent totally funding it already this year.
We don't know the due.
I don't think.
How do I believe it? No.
Last year, yeah.
Nobody else have any questions?
But you had a major payout.
No, I'm good.
Are you, are you okay if you want to go ahead and do that and make that minus the fifty?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept this with the exception of the liability insurance, three one two oh three, taking that from a hundred thousand back down to fifty thousand.
There's a motion, there's a second. Is there any further discussion? You guys have any further discussion? And then all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Okay, we'll look at eleven thirty-five. Um, the only thing I think eleven thirty-five was misleading is right that's, uh.
I will just say that they have a very large cash balance here, so they, they have plenty of money to support whatever that one.
We've talked about that before. I mean, eleven sixty-nine, same thing, there's no change, so, um. Unless there's any question, I don't, I think it's pretty straightforward at eleven thirty-five or eleven sixty-nine, if anybody wants to make a motion or propose some discussion. Do you have the budget status?
I'll make a motion that we accept eleven sixty-nine, eleven thirty-five as is.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, was that Howard?
Yes.
Um, is there any further discussion? Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposing names. We're going to get. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. What's the sheriff's budget next?
Yeah, you do have a budget status for GLC then, and also oh 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 five and oh oh two seven, which is becoming generally a big, big second.
How long, we've got, um, oh five. These, these increases in staffing are compliant with five percent. Nothing exceeds that.
Correct.
I assume this computer contract is just going up for whatever reason. We've seen anything of oh oh five that we should be particularly. Serving up. Someone wanted to make discussion or a motion about zero 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 five, I don't see anything there here that jumps off the page at me that. It looks like it's compliant with what we asked for. I think we want. Any others on zero zero five? Brad? Do you have any questions about the sheriff's budget, the zero 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 five? That's, uh, the chief deputy and patrolman detective, it's kind of pretty heavy on the staffing side. It's compliant, there's no. Couple of small changes, but not enough to, I think it would be to fight about it.
No, I'm good with it.
Want to make a motion or some discussion?
I can't make every.
Oh, yes, you are.
All right, I'll make a motion that we accept the sheriff's budget one thousand fun as it's.
Location zero 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 five.
Zero zero, zero zero five, I'm sorry.
That's okay. There's a motion, is there a second? Second. Right on this time. Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And is there any opposed? And I probably should have asked about, um. Zero zero two seven, because I think the only thing was garbage, if I remember right on that, right? Is garbage having some? Yeah, so garbage pickup. But I mean, I probably would have tried to use taxes to the republic, or is that Apex?
We have.
Search.
Okay, we need to go.
Apex.
Yeah, it's everything. They're blowing them away. Um. Since this isn't a big change, what I'd like to say, you know, a lot of people are moving away from, we, if we had to go out the cap route with Apex instead of republic, because they're raping us there. I'm serious, like they're killing people from the residential side a lot of places, so doing that. I think people are pretty happy with Apex from what I've seen, so, um. I think we could do this a couple of different ways. We could make the motion contingent on Apex coming in with a cheaper amount, and then we could always amend that through, um, Rachel, if for some reason we have to stay with republic, but. Public's really bad about that.
Should they do residential?
Stay with, yeah. In fact, I need to get off my flight, okay? I notice the mayor or has.
That's right.
So, that'd be good.
I think that's, that's about it. Does somebody want to make a motion about zero zero two seven? Brad, any questions about zero zero two seven? Garbage was the only thing that went off, and I just suggest that we take a look at Apex for that.
All right, I'll make a motion that we accept zero zero two seven, contingent on a possible change in the gar- garbage pickup price, if we get better price for Apex.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Howard, is there any other further discussion, Mark? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Okay, we shall look at. One 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 four now, location zero 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 zero. All right. It's, it's the same, zero zero.
They can do the least payment.
Oh.
Yeah.
And then there was, uh, insurance that I used, I love the same. Insurance.
All of these, uh, changes are based on, um. Like what we're going to suggest about even applying to five percent. Are we really expecting a, a twenty-five percent increase in jail meals?
Um, so, right now, I'm not sure if we need to get it to what we have now. So, like, it was like, what, ninety cents a meal, it's like a dollar forty a meal. A little cat, some they, they go up over the year.
I just heard on the radio that groceries in general are up twelve percent.
I mean, we can, we can, we had it.
Let's see how much we have to shave out. Let's just mark that as a contingent item. If everybody's comfortable with that, I'll leave them, we'll come back to if we, the budget gets kicked back, we'll, we'll mark that in there with how we balance those raises versus.
Yeah, and we can see how it turns out for sure.
Yeah. We submit, we'll just mark that as a, we submit item. Um, I can see, are you comfortable with that? If someone would like to make a motion to that effect. If you'd like to go ahead and include eleven seventy-five with that too, possibly, just because there's no, down eleven seventy-five, there's.
Six.
Which one?
Eleven fifty-six, eleven seventy-five.
Okay, what did you, what did you came to?
Right?
Out there, the one is.
Okay, so I guess we are gonna have a motion to accept. One one four, one one five six and one one seven five with the contingency on the meals for one one five six.
For one.
One one one.
One one four, I'm sorry, excuse me, two numbers.
I said.
Okay. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now dispatcher, from twelve hundred three, is that most, let's see, that would be mostly, or five percent?
Yeah, and then we're asking, um, what do we want to do for the court, um, for the state? It's not making up.
I'll, I'll probably. Well, but, so one of the things here is that I see that you're. That's, that's more than a five percent increase on dispatcher. Why, why is that so much?
Um, it's a thousand dollars more.
Five percent. Three hundred and forty-four thousand, is it?
Yes, so that includes eight of them, not including the one that's in.
Five percent is only seventeen thousand dollars. Where, where's?
So. No, we added a thousand. They haven't had a raise since they've done it. Like, we raised the officers, we raised the jail, but we haven't raised this now.
Supposing you give a thousand and five percent. Really, it's definitely about fifteen percent.
What?
We get thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars from the state every month. So, you get about three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars a year from the state. So, this is definitely over what we're going to be raising from the state, so you're going to have to figure out what we're doing for next.
What, where, um? If we were to get any money from, you know, municipalities?
Well, this, I was going to say, does this, this doesn't reflect that.
This doesn't reflect that, right?
That'll be thirty-nine thousand.
So, maybe, maybe.
Which is only going to take you up to about four hundred.
I was going to talk about that a little bit in our meeting, but I've heard some feedback from Rachel when I called the city today and spoke with the treasurer, but. I don't have to. Already kept me pretty fearful about it, but. So, did we not warn about this stuff five years ago?
Well, that's like they've known a long time. Um, what, um, so, so when was the last time the dispatcher sent it?
Oh, gosh.
Well, they, they can get the percentage rate.
Right. Not outright.
Okay.
X amount of dollars raised, that's, that hasn't happened quite sometimes.
I mean, um.
How would everyone feel about making a contingent if we can conclude this thing with the municipalities? If we don't.
Well, you still, you still have to find a hundred thousand dollars. I mean, you're, even if you do get money from the municipalities, you're still going to be under a hundred thousand.
Total.
Uh, I thought we moved something to see that.
Three seventy-eight plus thirty-nine is.
We, we moved one this, so how does that, if you're saying it's three hundred and seventy-eight, if I'm adding this up right, we're only looking at three hundred and ninety-seven forty-five, so are we a hundred thousand short?
They're asking for five forty-six. We get three seventy-eight from the state.
I see what you're saying.
We get forty thousand from other municipalities.
Yes, that, this is a hundred, hundred and six thousand.
Basically.
And you, I already was with the other dispatcher in June.
Okay, that was a hundred and fifty-four.
Have we asked any of the other counties about how they find that state?
They make it up right now, you don't know.
All right, I hate to do this to Stacy, but I mean, since we're trying to get five percent this year, could you possibly think about for twenty twenty-three? Hold this and another raise that will have this under it. So, I just, you know, I don't know otherwise how to make this work, you know what I'm saying, but.
Were you?
Well, for those kind of new people, what, do I get to vary, you know, with, you know, the possibility that some of us may not be here? Um. What are your thoughts?
How does, you, maybe you don't, maybe you don't know this, but how does the, um, the dispatcher pay compare here to other counties of similar size?
Um, I'm not sure.
I mean, do we know? Is it competitive?
Lower than Marshall or than Glass County.
Yeah.
But not drastically lower, though. There's several of them that were more. I, we looked that up before. Um, what if we did one year with our funds and see if we can close it? Yeah, we can always drop it. That's one.
The commissioners have to agree to that, too. That's the only other thing.
How big is that dollar amount?
About a hundred thousand.
Well, possibly, yeah. Yeah.
Not necessarily opposed to, but it's starting to feel like we're kind of nickel and dime ourselves on the ARCA funds.
Yeah.
We're, we're. I'm worried we might be at risk of, you know, overextending ourselves and not realizing it.
I know you guys don't want to hear, but the only way that you're going to be able to long-term do EMS and public, in the sheriff's department, is through the public safety.
Well, but we've got some other things working too, so.
So. Um, how much have we actually spent out of that ARCA? Do you know? Not much, right?
Well, you, I mean.
We appropriated or we earmarked it, but we didn't spend it.
You have, yeah, you spent it on EMS.
We didn't, yeah.
I, I mean, I would say about two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Is what, is definitely spent.
Because we talked about the scanning and all that.
Yeah, that's what's.
Well, then, if you're including the scanning, I would say about three to four thousand.
We got one million?
You got four point.
Over, yeah.
Yeah.
Two something, two one this year or whatever, right?
And we, we did receive our ticket payment, so we have our four million dollars in there.
Oh, we have the whole thing, yeah.
And that's time sensitive, too, when that money's dispersed, right?
You have to allocate it by twenty twenty, end of twenty twenty-four, and you have to completely spend it by the end of twenty twenty-six.
I mean, with. I can't believe, I can't believe that I might say this, but I'm good. Um. Maybe it doesn't seem fair, but there's a lot of things that aren't fair. And I mean, dispatching is like one of the most important jobs, it is.
Well.
I mean, I mean.
County general and the nine one one. Ours has lasted on the nine one one fund for years and years and years.
I mean, is there maybe some way we can, um. Maybe meet a little common ground about that? Of radio instead of a thousand, maybe five hundred? I mean, I don't know, I'm just throwing stuff out there. I mean, I'm just throwing stuff out there.
More than happy to.
Proposed rate.
Pardon me?
What's the proposed rate for person, like you're talking about?
I, I don't know how they're paying the everybody, I don't really.
That would be like a three percent increase plus a five.
Yeah, it'd be from half percent. Yeah.
And they're at what now?
They're at about thirty-eight thousand dollars a year. Right.
But not everybody's at the max, all right? Can we put a range on that one, too?
Yeah, so it, she can start her math, I think the lowest was like sixteen eighty or something, and then she'll get up to.
Our thing. Hired with a lot of experience.
You can always use our funds for next year. You can always use ARPA funds for next year and then talk about other avenues for future years.
But the only problem, the only, that, that's fine, but the only problem is, you hate to give somebody the max, and, and not, I'm not trying to be facetious. But, but, but give them as much based on what we think's gonna happen, and things happen later, then when do we do that?
Right now, we know we can't afford it here.
I mean, I'm trying to give them something.
Let's, let's leave the five percent, and then if we, if we can make the decision on ARPA later.
You want the five percent and not the thousand dollars?
Right, right.
The five, that five percent and five hundred dollars, maybe, I don't know, I'm just trying to throw something out there.
Well, that's something that's way over, you know what I mean, that's not gonna get us down to where we need to be. You know what I mean?
Yeah. Unless we do it.
How many, how many total dispatcher spots are there, eight?
There are nine, but I can't get my one on hill, cause of staffing, it's over at forty-five hundred.
Because we have, like, there was a part-time full, we created a lot or something.
Which is paid on a GFC.
Yeah. So there's eight of them then, actually, right, or nine, nine?
We give the, we give the off, road officers a raise a couple years ago and didn't do anything for them.
Yeah.
Dispatch.
Forty-five hundred bucks.
If you get the five hundred, you mean?
We should fly it, and then if we get the, the budget kicked back, we just take it off. Might be safer than tapping into ARPA pronouns.
So, so, so then we could.
Right, well, I mean, for a long period, yeah, or, you know, some, some help work, county general, you know. Either way, but I mean, I'm just saying that we would, that's where we would close the gap. Lost, lost revenue, that's, that's right up that alley, so, um, but, and they, you know what I mean? If, if it floats though with the state.
The state's not gonna. They don't look to the virgin ninety-nine one.
Right, that's what I mean, but I mean collectively, the whole budget.
Collectively.
Right.
So that would take it from three forty-four to three thirty-nine five hundred.
You get five hundred?
Three thirty-four to what, I'm sorry?
Well, it's three forty-four now, if we took out forty-five hundred, which would be half of the, half of the thousand, right? That would bring, bring to three thirty-nine five hundred, right?
Can you make a motion?
Okay.
Motion, yeah.
I still love it, probably.
No, probably. Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Um, is there any further discussion? Brad, are you okay with taking that down to five hundred instead of a thousand and seeing if this float it? We have a motion, a second, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Is there any opposed? All these others are, uh. One-one-oh and zero-zero-six, let's see, nine-one-one-two, those are all, uh, funds that are. Tending on revenue that they.
Okay, with all the rest of the funds?
Yes. Uh, the other forty-nine nineteen is, yeah, same, same boat, so does somebody wanna make a motion on the balance of those shared budget items?
Yeah.
Right, forty-nine nineteen, though, I thought you just said you're okay with it.
I am okay, I'm okay with the.
I didn't see anything out of this role of forty-nine nineteen either, so I just, I thought maybe you were trying to draw my attention to something, so somebody wanna make a motion on the balance of those shared budget items?
This should be four-zero-zero-six, four-one-one-zero, forty-nine nineteen, nine-one-one-two, nine-one-seven-six.
Yes, I'll make a motion if we accept, if we remain. Sure, funky, fancy.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Sorry.
Second, Howard, is there anybody opposed? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed?
I just do this with it.
Uh, EMS is right here in the stack, is that how you wanna do it?
I don't care, whatever you want to do.
Yeah, I'll get with that. There is here. Uh, what page is, what the status?
Maybe twenty, well, I don't know what page number, but there, it'd be twenty, you know, the ending.
Right. Uh, page nine?
I have no idea.
They're looking to.
This, this is mine, oh.
Gotta get the other one, yeah.
The six and the thick one.
Yeah, page nine. There's no starting page rates.
The one that jumped out at me at this one is, he shouldn't have to have extra help of twenty-nine, twenty-one thousand nine hundred, because there's no longer a part-time person in the office, and that's what the office.
And they haven't used any of that either, so yeah, that would.
Yeah, I have every number here.
The only thing that jumped out at me too was one of these lines too, where you increased it. Yeah.
Well, part-time staff was nine thousand two hundred and seventy, that's where we got shorted last year, the ARPA funds got reimbursed.
Yeah.
It fell in the void.
Number eight. The part-time staff shouldn't really be the ninety-one, I left the zero.
Yeah, so did, did we, was, how many shift captains are there?
Three.
Three.
Uh. Why do you see ambulance supplies going up five thousand when you haven't even used fifty percent now?
I'm looking.
That's the only, that's the only other thing really that, that you increased a lot, um.
Well, the shift captains, it must only been one last year.
Correct, uh, well, there's one, and then we lost one half between years, so we only saw one and a half, now you see a full three on there.
Yeah, just. Um, where are you at with gas and oil loop too, I just wanna make sure that you're saying.
We just, well, I got those pronounced here as well, yeah.
Gas and oil loop only used fifty percent, so.
But here's the problem with the last invoice that we have, and I have it here as well, it was ten thousand, just sort of eleven thousand.
Those are both in O two O, I would say, let's leave that there, and he can move that money into gas or oil loop if he has to, I'm just a little wary not increasing it, even though he hasn't used fifty percent yet. But we don't know where the gas is gonna go, so personally, I don't have a problem with this budget with this number that it's got here. Um, if we look at. Matter, but I mean, we can see forty-one-on-one, so that's their, their donation fund, so if they collect, it collects, the budget does it. Um, so if somebody would like to make a motion, collectors are now the EMS budgets, I think we're okay, are you okay with that?
I, I'm okay, just wanna make sure I get this right, the twenty-one-nine, don't need for extra help, that, that's how I've written down.
Right, so that would be the only change is the twenty-one-nine.
And then, my only question was the twenty-one-nine. Get rid of it completely, or do I slide it to oil and loop?
Oh, cause I'm telling you, we're gonna keep that other five thousand in the foil and loop that I was gonna take away for ambulance supplies, let's just keep that.
Okay.
Those are both in O two O?
Yes.
So you could just, those are out.
Okay.
So will it just be the, the motion would just be minus the twenty-one-nine?
For the part-time, uh, extra help.
Yeah, okay, I'm gonna make a motion that we accept zero-zero-two-O minus the twenty.
Seven.
Twenty-one thousand nine.
Yeah, twenty-one, twenty-one thousand nine hundred and extra help.
Two hundred, four, forty-one, one with that.
I think that was also included, right?
And I'll include forty-one-on-one with it, because there's no change.
That's the donation. Frank has, uh, so, uh, there's a motion, a second, um, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Is there any opposed? We can stop. Don or Howard?
You make your choice.
It wasn't me, cause I'm making all the motions.
Did a good job, Tim.
The health department is the next one, Frank usually just comes right in, and he's only got staff, and he's there, so I don't know if somebody wants to go and make a motion about all those.
Those are all five percent, is that what we're saying?
Yes. He's compliant on everything, he didn't increase anything. Gets a lot of grants and other things too, I think that helps him with his mission.
Actually, it's not.
It's not?
It's not?
Well, not too fine as much.
Well, um, in one-one-five-nine.
Part of it's funded out there.
Well, the two twenty-two adopted budget didn't turn out in there, so it is not over five percent, you just can't see that.
Okay, I think maybe you must.
So I'm still.
So, what you're saying is, all the other ones are gonna stay the same, so, and he's just getting five percent for it.
So. So hold on here now.
Are you talking about one-one-five-nine?
Yeah.
They're, they're actually less than five percent, because you're saying it's somewhere else.
But, well, the column where it says twenty-twenty-two adopted budget, that didn't turn out, so you don't, you can't see, yeah.
You don't know, okay, okay.
So that had three percent, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That's mine. That's all.
What about, what about eleven-sixty-eight-two, no changes?
Yeah.
Those pages and the other ones too. Nine-one-three-three, just two dollars less. Okay.
Why, why is Jim's simplex contract?
Wait, you can't go on, they didn't vote on the health.
Do you wanna make a motion on this?
Yes.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the health budget, so one, eleven, eleven-five-nine, eleven, eleven-six-eight, and nine-one-three-three, as is.
I'm motion.
How's that?
Okay, all of them, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
What happened to my place where I put them?
No, you're fine, I got a lot.
You have an explanation.
Now, the explanation is, I'm a few documents, but it's only one thing.
Do you have a reason?
No, it's not enough of an increase. Uh, there's nothing documented here on Jim's budget, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I'm completely okay with Jim's budgets.
The only thing I see that really went up was fire.
Yeah, he has an explanation for that, and the problem is, is that, that these, Simplex, the company that we get it from, they got this. Um, you know, I'm a certified fire inspector, so I, I know some of the things that they're slipping through there, and it's just money making things for them. Or like, you know, head testing and all these other things, but he's, he hasn't raised anything else, you know, so.
So, I just got a question, are the, um. Are the utilities paid, paid somewhere else, besides what the courthouse utilities have?
Yenex has their own utilities, courthouse has their own utilities.
We have courthouse.
Cause even thirty-four thousand for that whole building, I mean, the way everything is going up, that's what we might have to look at, I mean, maybe not now, but utilities are gonna go up like crazy. So. I'm just saying, so that's something we might wanna keep an eye on.
That might be, you're saying it might be under budget.
It may be under budget, it's something we could keep back our mind at.
All right, somebody wanna make a motion though, for those three, would be oh-one-seven, oh-two-six.
Oh-two-eight? I made a motion that we accept zero-zero-one-seven, zero-zero-two-six, zero-zero-two-eight, as is.
Second, then one.
Second for Don, um, is there any further discussion?
Aye.
Ems, um, cash or. It's hot. Plan division. This mostly just five percent.
So, plain commission. The means that's attached on back, even though the full-time was denied by the commissioners and the council, they still put in just full-time on the twenty-twenty-three budget.
The full-time was denied by the commissioners, so I, I think we should just, uh, move forward as, as an all on that, we'll consider that. Um, maybe for twenty-three, for now.
I don't know what's positioned since that'd be.
Yeah, that, that too, because, yeah, this, me and money that's there, that we can spend on something else, the other thing is, is I know that the surveyor's office has helped with the. The complaint was the solar farmers, but there really isn't that much to do now that the ordinance is done, the next ordinance will theoretically be similar to the previous ordinance is, so permitting and things like that.
New project coming down the pipeline, that's.
So that would change the budget.
They wanna talk about.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, sorry, Howard, no, you're fine, at some point, twenty-three thousand dollars and change in the unsafe building. Account. There is some buildings that they've been struggling with for twelve years. And they're probably gonna need to come down, they wanna talk about that, and I wanna, like to get on the agenda for the next meeting, and I've got a schedule. Of how much has been put in the accounts, I think the last three years, four years, and how much has been spent out of the accounts, but. It's a liability situation, they wanna talk to, I think, us as a board, or I suggest that they talk to us as a board about because, and I don't wanna, this is a hit budget here, and I don't wanna get too far into it, but. We don't really wanna clean up people's properties for free, right?
We want to make that thing.
Right, we wanna be able to get that money back, and we'd like to discuss collectively of what's a safe way to get that, cause there's some ways we can't get the money.
Well, right now, we put it on our taxes, but in a tax sale, we don't.
Exactly, that's our problem, in tax sales, we don't, we won't get any back, so we need to kind of bring that for the next meeting, I'd like to discuss that.
I, I'm interested in that too, but honestly, when I look forward to the solar money, I think the solar money is, is geared towards economic development, I think. Clearing some of these lots, and, and I think really the next level too is commissioners owning some of these properties, and then selling them, preferably to profit or developing some type of. Common type of property makes a lot of sense too, so I, I, I agree with you, I think we do need to look at some creative there, but I think that we'll start getting solar money, starting to trickle in next year. Um, yeah, um, at, you know, towards the second and the last part of the year, um, from Dunn's Bridge, um, and so I think, uh. I think there's a number of ways we could.
From what I understand, what needs to be brought up to date, buildings need to be tore down, I think they're gonna exceed that twenty-three thousand.
Sure.
And they just wanna make sure that the council's on board with how we're gonna fund that, and I said I'd look into it for them and.
Well, we'd like to also see some guidance, because there were some complaints from previous commission, and the current commission wants to make sure that everything is negotiated as far as who's doing the tearing down. You know, did they bid for it, how did they get there, I mean, even if it's under twenty-five thousand, we still wanna know, what was the process of doing it, because we've had some complaints within the county before. Uh, we just don't wanna have a thing of, you know, hey, it was Dave Pearman's friend that they selected to come and tear this building down, you know, something like that, so would you agree with that, Mark?
Yeah, and we also kind of wanna talk about, my point to them was.
Me either.
Let's make sure we get some of this money back, we're not just cleaning properties up for us, you know what I mean?
We definitely don't wanna do that.
Right.
You'll be ready to talk about that more too at the next meeting, so, okay, um, does somebody wanna make a motion to these approving minus that?
Well, so, so what we would do, if we're gonna go a five percent off of the twelve-four-four-seven, right?
Right.
That would make that thirteen oh-six-nine.
Okay.
Okay, so that means we subtract that from that, which is, what, nineteen thousand four hundred dollars? So that would make the total budget twenty-one thousand six hundred and eighty-four. So I'll, I'll make, I'll make a motion that we accept the BZA, um, zero, zero-zero-thirty. With the exception of administrative assistant, the twenty-twenty-three budget being five percent over what the twenty-twenty-two budget was.
Now, the motion, is there a second?
Did you do that, Howard?
Oh, it don't matter, Kim.
Howard do the change.
I wrote it, I'm okay.
You wrote down K, I lied, she wrote down K, Howard.
Oh.
Somebody else feel free to make motions, I mean, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to hoard it, okay?
Uh, IT didn't go up that much. Sixty-seven dollars.
No, and I made it oops, and so did Rachel.
So it went up more than that?
Or went up less.
Well, they, they already see my increase allow, they don't see your.
Yeah, but your increase allow, and my total that I had is actually less than the total I had after.
Are you saying?
My math is off and her math.
So we should make a motion based on.
And I didn't put in Rachel's five percent, I seen her three percent email, but I didn't put in the five percent email.
Okay, so basically what we're, what we would do then is make a motion with you fixing the numbers. There's nothing here that went.
Yeah, that's quite.
Yeah, let's work on her number, I wanna work and throw on the numbers, if that's okay, and.
Well, all we need to change is doing the salaries up to five percent, not three percent.
Right, but I don't, I don't think the numbers was the, the allow increase is right either.
Mine.
I just did.
Which one, which one you don't pick right?
If I total everything, oh shoot, I think I have it all wrong.
I gotta, I gotta, uh, computer correct. And with my allow increase in there, I'm without the five percent, it's three hundred and ten, five seventy-six.
Yeah, and the five percent increase would be fifty-one, zero-thirty, opposed to fifty thousand five eighty.
But on my budget form, I have three, ten, seven, ninety, so that's why I'm saying, one of us is off, and I didn't even put in the five percent, so that's why, I just wanna get everything double-checked before.
Well, this, this one should be right. Wrong number. This one should be right, the total, other than the, it should be fifty one thousand thirty instead of fifty thousand five eighty. Right?
Five eighty and the other one should be thirty nine thousand seven sixty eight.
What you wrote down, your total was three.
Five one zero three.
My math was wrong, I just.
It should be approved. As is with five percent.
Somebody wanna make that approved as is with five percent, thank you guys.
That that one's thirty, thirty nine seventy, seven sixty nine. Okay, I'll make approve, make a motion that we approve zero zero three five, the IT budget, as is with the exception. Of the director, and we'd be the assistant as well, right, correct? That the two, the two thousand twenty three budget would reflect a five percent increase versus a three. Right?
Yes, you're right.
All those in favor, please say aye. Okay, so, um, explain to us on the court, Rachel, what forty nine twenty five, what is that? Why does that get so big? See, receiving something in the forty nine twenty five, the other, the other budgets look like even five percent. It's all right, okay, so the other funds, have you seen anything, any other ones? So we didn't, on eleven twenty two, we didn't have a twenty twenty two adopted budget, I'm assuming that.
Eleven twenty two, it's nine one four one this year, it they go back to four year year, but that, that is the huge questions that.
Okay, it is just scary because of, but it was one forty nine a year.
I don't have any problems.
So, so, so you're saying the forty, the forty nine twenty five is grants, are those secured for?
Um, I'm assuming they are.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't work with those great ones.
But he doesn't get it unless they're. Uh, so, and otherwise, it looks like we're okay in the court.
I guess it would be one. Okay, so, I'll make a more motion that we approve the budgets for the court. So I guess it's zero zero twenty nine, but then it's twenty one hundred.
Yeah.
And twenty one oh five.
Yes.
Eleven twenty two and forty nine twenty five, as is.
Now, motion, is there a second? All those in favor, please say aye. Any clue why the reassessment went up twenty five thousand, I mean, I know how that's true, but.
Yeah, I gave you, so the saver account changed the number to one two two four, so one two two four is the correct budget, I just gave you as a reference.
That's what that means.
So you're saying that's what it used to be, it used to be one one eight eight?
Yeah, yeah. Um, you're going from four oh three. Four thirteen.
Four thirteen, okay.
Which is mainly.
All right.
Yeah.
Got it?
So the deputy technical advisor, what is there more than one of them, or is that?
Yes, there's one.
Okay.
There's two.
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we accept the uh assessors, um, eleven eighty eight and twelve twenty four.
You're only accepted one two two four.
Oh, really, you, oh, that's right, sorry. Yeah, I I amend that emotion, that we are only accepting fund twelve twenty four, as is.
The motion is second, okay, all those in favor, please say aye. I guess there aren't any other budgets or like. Rick is the same as what we always talk about, so. They're funded by state with, so. That would be worthy of a motion.
All right, I'll make a motion that we ex- accept the budget for Wick nineteen hundred ninety eight oh five, as is.
Your motion, is there a second? Second. Second from Howard, all of us in favor, please say aye. Carries, and then for the clerk, I don't think she had anything that was besides the. Besides that service contract, but she actually went down in her election.
She did go down, the only thing I see is she's changing her voter registration officer page to five hundred two thousand.
Yeah, that was that thing that we talked about, remember, so by statute, the clerk can pay herself as the voter reg- voter registration. Officer, um, it's to her discretion, she's raising that, and that's consistent with the other counties. At least a couple that I talked to, usually shop, actually, I didn't talk to Rachel shop, or on my behalf. And I think they pretty much, a lot of people were doing twenty five hundred, but not twenty five up and five hundred, it's only. So.
Yeah, so both budgets only up like seven thousand.
Well, hear it, Todd.
Okay, I will make a motion that we accept the clerks and the clerk election, um, zero 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 one and zero zero one nine, as is.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye? The recorder, uh, she actually talked to us a little bit about her budget, she's pretty. Open about that, her big change was eleven forty, uh, eleven forty for her, uh, Fiddler. That's from her perpetual, so, um, the other stuff is just standard. So, does somebody wanna make a motion about recorder?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we accept the budget for the recorder, fund one thousand zero 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 four, and funds eleven forty, as is.
Second from Kate, um, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Probably should've said the same thing about the coroner.
Coroner, um, does want the, so her pay, they get eighty five dollars to call on. Falls down, he doesn't wanna increase that to ninety five.
Mentioned that before. He's been very conservative, he had asked for a couple of small things from the commissioners today, and I thought were worthy.
Where does that come out of?
That's what, that's just an increase in his fund.
It's, uh, that isn't, that it comes out of the deputy pay, but they get eighty five dollars to call right now, and you want to increase it to ninety five call. Which you'll have to put that in the salary ordinance, and that's it.
That's reasonable, most counties, most deputies, but I understand per call is a hundred and eighty to two hundred and fifty dollars to call. That office is way underpaid. So you're. And I'm saying this, I have a little bit of experience with it, so it's it's almost sounds like you're making a motion, I'll make the motion that.
Kinda hurt.
We have a second.
I'll second it.
Todd, all those in favor, please say aye.
I just want my name, I just want my name in the history books to start down. Purdue.
Purdue.
Quiet, which is what we ask for, it's just pay. She always comes to me above that office downstairs in the space down in the basement.
Oh, she'll be.
The commissioners never gave her the whole floor down, I always butt heads with her on that, on her space.
Yeah, I forgot to mention that the last time I got the contract put in front of me, I won't forget that the next time.
Yeah, she doesn't need the whole thing, commissioners need to throw things potentially, uh, does somebody wanna make a motion about Purdue? If you want to follow veteran affairs right after that also.
All right, let me, let me look at it real quick.
Okay, yep.
Hold their horses. So, all right, I'll make a motion that we approve, um, the Purdue zero zero two one and the veteran. Budget zero zero two four as.
Have a motion, Todd, is there a second?
Sorry. I've been worst.
Everybody's saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Where are we at now?
Uh, we are at the park board, um, I noticed you left the seat at out here, um. I reminded the park board that the seat originally was just startup money that we gave before, we were not going to be continuing to give seat it. So, uh, it's not in the folder.
Well, CDA is actually, I thought, I took kind of all the extras under my. It is in there right now, so you'll have to take that out.
Okay, well, that was startup money, so, this is a pretty big budget, and we went from not funding the park board to. A lot of funding here. Is there, is this in the budget status two four, I looked at it the last one, forty nine twenty seven. Okay, repair and maintenance, there was only like two grand that got in there, the only thing I would say is take the repair maintenance back to thirty two thousand. Rest of it's staff, whatever, you know.
So, I got a question, I wasn't able to attend the last park board meeting.
Right.
But do we have a breakdown on all the funds collected?
We, I asked for that, they have, it it's not available yet, but I did ask the, I asked more, they haven't keeping track of it.
Are they doing a quietis?
She's.
I mean, are we doing a quietis back to the county of the money?
Just, just, uh, just in bulk, right?
Right. You just do like a general quietis for everything?
I know, uh, so we receeded beach entrance fee in one area and rental of county property in another.
In kayaks too, right, which is a kayak site.
Uh, the kayaks would be receipted into with the beach receipts.
I asked their board to start giving us a report monthly of that, did they submit it at this time?
I mean, I can bring up what they spent.
I asked their board to give us a ledger of that, what we want is, we want park entry, we want camp, uh, and then the rentals like.
So if somebody rents a pier, they don't pay park entrance in?
They, oh, I don't.
Right, no, okay. You know, the only thing concerns me is, that gate is open all the time, there's people milling in now, they're twenty four hours a day.
They're also still, they're also having the gate person leave at four P M now.
But I've, I've been out there so many times, and the gates are wide open, there's all kinds of people out there, so what kind of liability do we have for that? I mean, they're sat there milling around.
It's, uh.
I mean, maybe none.
There's the answer walking away.
And he's walking away.
I think it does, it does, it does keep it open for Stark County.
And that's okay, I I'm just asking a question.
No, what what we've done, what what we got a commitment from in the park board meeting is, is the people that are at the campground are gonna start volunteering more and helping with some of those things too.
Okay, that's fine, so, I mean, I just wanna protect our assets and.
Yeah.
You know.
The superintendent of the beach in the campground, they're also superintendent over the rest of the county ran hours.
Right, right back.
Are you doing a question for me, Dave, something? No, um, he was just gonna ask about the liability of leaving the, the gates open at the beach unattended during business hours on off time.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, we'll go then.
So, um. Are gonna try to help us at the gate more, because we are missing a lot of collected money, I mean. I've had people complain to me a lot about getting in there free, and a lot of it's during the week.
Yeah, but.
But between four, and we used to do it till six o'clock, they only do it till four now. It's their, their, their board decided that was okay, we're missing a lot in those two hours, tons, I mean, that that place is packed. But, um, it's the board that we need to drive for that. Um, Mark's wanting to get more active, uh, I think in the park board too, and just understanding of the revenue side of it. Um, but, uh, the, well, the only other thing I'll say is that I went to their meeting, Rick is motioning already for the park superintendent to have a raise only three months into it. I was, I was against that, I mean, I, you can see the minutes from it, so, nothing against her, she's here now, but there, nobody from her board is here. Um, otherwise, it was mostly this discussion of just how better management, manage it, how her board could support her better.
And she's obviously new, and been thrown into it, a month or two, couple of months, right? Yeah, so, so I I guess the only, the only reason I asked that question, Dave, is, is the budget's two hundred and forty three thousand dollars. I mean, what? What has came in from the park board to offset that difference? Well, and fees and everything.
Well, here, here, there was a few other things that I was a little sore about, and it actually, it actually wasn't Cameron's fault, but they bought some peers.
Yeah.
They had Steve check them out. And then he said they were fine, and then when they, he and Les looked at him again this year, there was sixteen thousand dollars just for hardware.
Yeah.
Spent twenty five thousand on another set of peers from the other marine, that was from Larry's marine, this is from the other marine that's closing down for Michelle. Now, personally for me, there has to be a limit on peers too, you know what I'm saying, like, eh, I'm more worried about people using that beach than I am. I like the revenue, trust me, but there is a point too where we don't wanna start impeding the people that are coming there to enjoy the beach, because people in Stark County, that's probably the point. So, um, you know, that was one of the things that we did talk about, but the. The, I don't know what you wanna call it, on the peers, that was not Cameron's fault, that was because of our consultant, they had Steve again, and Steve said they were fine, turned out they were.
I, I just want it to be straight on the record. That I'm not against trying to, um, stop Stark County people from using it, which I know you know that, Dave, but.
And I will say, there are some maintenance issues, I mean, one of the things that Rick is working on, uh, with some, uh, outside sources on trying to get some funding. On fixing the beach house, like, for me, as we start to see solar funds, those are the kind of things too, I think a little bit of that would be nice, fixing some of those things up. I I have personally not agreed with having an office out there and funding that. Rick's still pushing for that, we have, we have two available here, uh, but we have the one in the basement now, that's, but Rick wants it, Rick wants it out there, so. I don't know if it, it'll, it'll happen, but my thought was, instead of building a new building with new bathrooms, fix the beach house up, put a couple of small offices in the beach house. And start getting the beach house to work, to be utilized, maybe first for offices, but in the future for bathrooms, I don't know, candy machines. You know, or, yeah, and he, he was.
Are the, are the bathrooms operational out there at all?
Uh, not the beach house, we do have separate bathrooms.
You got the ones way at the far end, right, cause I saw a porta potty out there the other day, that's why I wondered.
The other thing is, there was originally a, um. There were, there was a grant that they were gonna get for a trailhead with a bathroom out there. My suggestion at their meeting was, and the trail people were gonna like this idea, my suggestion was, also make the beach house the trailhead. That way you can put pamphlets in there about our trails in Stark County, their trails, you know, all these other things, and then also look for funding to bring funding into that, to that building as well. So, I I think that's under consideration.
I, I know it's not totally, really our decision maybe at all, but my only problem with having the offices out there is one, or two, actually. One, it's not the Vass Lake Park Board, it's Stark County.
Exactly.
And the second thing is, are we gonna have somebody out there all year paying utilities on a building when they could be here, when there's no utilities?
Well, plus I gotta shovel their own snow, like, you know, like, I didn't hear Cameron say that to you, but that's the board saying that, but. I, you know, that person is gonna have to shovel their snow, that, you know what I mean, it's cold, like. We're not, we don't have a security guard out there, like, there's so many things that come into play about a person being by themselves, seven months out of the year, you know what I mean, out there. Where this is kinda has, you know, has proximity, I mean, today we had a complaint in the commissioners meeting about the debris on the beach at Coos Lake. So, you know, I mean, then she's gotta drive all the way from Vass Lake over there, I, again, there was no decisions made about it, but I think that there's gonna have to be some thought in it with the commissioners. On how that would best be managed.
And there's really no revenue, six months of the year gonna be made of.
Just for storage, just for storage, you know, for now, I mean, you know, who knows, maybe down the road, I don't know what we might fill that. To bring in, but there is storage revenue that happens for the ones that leave there.
Well, they, not last year, that's gonna be, this year will be the first stretch.
Yes.
So, Rachel, do we know, is it on here, what they've spent this year?
No, I I looked at it, the repair maintenance, they only spent like two thousand, that's why I'm saying, put the repair maintenance where it's at, and let's roll the dice on what they've got.
But I mean, like, the, we don't know what they've totally spent?
I didn't, I.
Okay.
And the part-time worker?
The part-time worker that is, um. They haven't been able to get a lot of part-time help has been the problem, and so. What they're proposing is doing that, is having like two people at the gate, and I know their board talked about paying fifteen dollars an hour, I don't think they're looking hard enough to find two kids.
Thirteen dollars?
Didn't we make, did we say rate for it?
You made this in salary ordinance, you guys made it from eight to thirteen fifty.
Okay, and they made it fifteen?
Well, they threw out fifteen, but it could be up to thirteen, but what they talked about doing is, on some days, having two gay people. Um.
Because of kayaks and so.
Yeah, it's, it's busy sometimes, yeah. But maybe we wanna split that too, because they haven't, they haven't hardly used any, but that's because they haven't had a lot of part-time staff, so, yeah. You know, and they still have a big part of their season to go run through, but, um, and again. Well, I mean, certainly if you wanted to try it out, knock five off of it, just, you know, just go to ten. They're right. I mean, that's what. More, not two hundred percent more, so, one possibility. More not, two hundred percent more. So, one possibility is to keep the repair and maintenance at thirty-two thousand and, uh, part-time worker at ten thousand now.
So the gas oil, the gas oil loop, that's for a mower that they bought?
Ah, that was your thing. Why aren't they not getting gas at the county garage?
She doesn't get gas at Kenbro.
So.
Don't, don't you get gas?
Oh, that's right. It's a beautiful, isn't it? Yeah, that's right.
No, yeah, I went to ask that. So why, what, where are we using gas on a move out there for?
That's where they, that's where everybody pays the county.
Five thousand.
Gas oil and loop is what you're paying at the county garage for people. That, that's what the area comes out of.
Gas and oil have doubled. They haven't, they have.
More than double.
Yeah, so I mean, five thousand is probably okay, but if you take five thousand off part-time worker, you know, I talked to their board about substantially reducing their parent maintenance too, but Rick said there's some things they still wanna fix. They wanna try to keep those funds there. He understood what that, you know, they weren't gonna get the seated. But I would say, give them one more try for the thirty-two. See if that gets it normalized and they start bringing some more revenue and also would be the, would be our hopes. So.
Yeah, so you're, you're saying, Dave, you're, you're saying taking, take, take that down sixteen thousand, right?
And then take another five, so twenty-one thousand off.
And take the other five out of the part-time workers?
Right, so you'd be at
What are you?
Two, two, two.
So then that's, you're making that's thirty-two, so would you say?
So that'd be two forty-three.
We had two, 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 eight, five, eight, right?
Minus sixteen.
Yeah, two, 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 eight, five, eight. Yeah.
So you wanna take repair and maintenance down to thirty-two and then part-time working down to ten?
Ten, yeah. Just in case. I mean, theoretically, if they're gonna double it, you know what I mean? Like, they should have more budget for that. And so that's.
Twenty-one thousand now.
To revenue forecast or?
Yeah, she does have a revenue forecast for twenty twenty-two.
So that takes down exactly what it is this year.
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
I'd like to make that motion contingent on seeing some revenue reports.
Well, actually, Mark's got the revenue forecast. A motion is underway, but he's looking at.
I'm just looking at this.
Tell us what the total revenue is.
Well, the, the total revenue amount she has on here is, is two, two forty-three, two fifty, which is.
So it's right there.
Which is right there, which is actually gonna be, yeah, within, actually, the budget we have is about six hundred dollars less than what this is.
So I say give it a chance.
So that's okay.
We hit there.
Yeah.
Like I said, at the board meeting, they told me it was right at what I had in my head, minus the sixteen and the.
I mean, I'm.
So it's sustaining itself then.
I'm, I'm looking at this, I mean.
In theory, we don't know, because we haven't finished this year. Last year, last year wasn't really a good year to look at.
So.
This is a forecast.
So you rent the pavilions out too and plus the car? That's okay?
Now, we have a little bit of a problem going on because we didn't get the piers in the water. So some people are getting their money back. Some people are pro-rating, and so it's gonna probably be a twenty thousand less this year, but it's because of the whole pier situation, which was out of the board's control, because of the hardware thing, right?
Okay. Um. Based off of what I see here, yeah, I will say we will approve four nine two seven, the park fund, with the exception of, of line two zero two oh two, we'll go from forty-eight thousand back to thirty-two thousand. And line one zero two one eight will go from the fifteen thousand back to the five thousand was the previous year.
We were gonna add five thousand to it.
Or you were gonna add five, so make it ten thousand. Okay, that's fine.
If you guys are.
No, that's fine. That, that, that still puts the budget with it. Okay, that, that still puts the budget with it. All right, so that would be, yeah. So we'll, we'll take zero zero two one eight to ten thousand instead of fifteen thousand.
Yeah, so you're at two, 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 eight, five, eight, right?
No, it'd be, it actually would be five thousand more than that. Be two, two, seven, cause I took out ten thousand. You wanna take?
No, you're taking out twenty-one thousand.
Yeah, I'm taking, okay, that, that's, okay, that, that's what I got written down. Yeah, I got twenty-one thousand written down. Okay. You guys are confusing me.
All right, a motion is our second. Second from Howard. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Cameron. Uh, treasurer, uh, I, the treasurer already got her money this year, so I don't think we're gonna take the treasurer off.
Okay. Here, where, where is the treasurer?
What?
Yeah, I'm just saying, pay attention.
She wasn't.
No, the treasurer, the treasurer is just going up his salary, so. Little bit of nonsense, but I mean, she took some, some off of her meeting, so really, I mean, she's compliant, so. I don't know if somebody wants to make a motion or ask a question.
I guess, I guess I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we approve the treasurer's budget, zero, 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 three, as submitted.
Second amendment.
We got new blood.
All those in favor, aye? Is there any opposed? Okay, so the surveyor, um, I wanted to bring up, uh, the surveyor had actually approached me about a pretty substantial increase in line. Um, I will, and Charlie called me again today to let the council know that he's in favor of us doing something whenever we can. I will say that Rachel and I have spent some time doing some searching. Um, we asked at the auditors meeting, Rachel reached out to some different colleagues. She, she has a connection with Clay County because they have a very similar size to us and very a lot of synergies. I don't know if you know anybody over there from EMS or corner or commissioners or anybody else, but very, very informative too. But one of the things we found out, and I was unaware of this, and I told Bill that you're not gonna take anything backwards either. But by statute, the surveyor is to be paid two-thirds of the salary ordinance if he is not certified. I've always assumed Bill was certified. I didn't know that until today. He's not certified. And so, um, in the case of Clay County, it was forty-four thousand and some change.
It was forty-four thousand, nine thirty-four if you're certified and twenty-nine, nine, five, six if you're not.
Right, and so Bill's at forty-one right now. Now, I don't believe, you know, I mean, he's an elected official. He's already been at that pay. I don't believe we wanna try to take the bull by the horns and try to take it backwards. I will say that the planning commission has needed a lot of help. Bill has stepped in and done a lot of work with those, for those, to try to get that going. If it wasn't for Bill, we wouldn't have gotten a lot of the solar ordinances done and passed and permits and things like that. So I think, I think fifty-eight's out of reach. Um, what is two-thirds of fifty-eight? Not that I'm saying I wanna move the salary ordinance, because we still have two more years for an election for surveyor, so. But just out of curiosity, what, what is two-thirds of that?
Thirty-eight, thirty-eight, thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty.
Wow, okay, so we're even way above that. Um, so Rachel had some ideas on how, because the thing is too, is I don't know what we're gonna get for surveyor next. So I don't wanna advertise this as some big pay and get somebody that's got no surveyor. Bill had surveyor experience. He had county experience, you know what I mean? So, um, he kinda slid into that training a little bit better. Rachel had an idea how we could help out with longevity to give them a little something. You know, I, like I said, I, I, I don't wanna put Mark on the spot because Charlie has already called me and it's, and expressed that he'd like to see Bill get a little bit of incentive for that. I think based on what we're hearing about the statute though, we have to be careful about our limitations.
What about all the other elected officials?
And then you gotta also have the vote of all the other elected officials. Now, um, one of the things that I did mention, and I mentioned this to Charlie, he didn't know this, but, um, for some reason, he didn't know that he gets twelve hundred to walk the ditches. He does get twelve hundred to walk the ditches.
It's the mileage plus the, plus the, plus the bucks, plus the thousand for the section corners perpetuating as well.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I got that one.
What I missed?
Um, I was just saying how he also gets the twelve hundred for walking the ditches too, that we previously were, didn't know or didn't think that he did, so.
Well, in another way that we talked about is longevity pay. When you guys put in, not you guys, but when longevity was picked, put in years ago, elected officials don't get longevity. Why? So, I asked around to different counties and this is what other counties do.
One of the things we didn't talk about this.
I mean, that's another way.
What does that do to our budget for next year though? Is what longevity is for everybody?
Raise your budget by like six thousand.
Total.
Total. Cause you don't have a lot of elected officials that have, you know.
What do we call longevity for an elected official?
Well, you're, you're long, so you approved longevity years ago, five hundred at five years, a thousand at ten years. And it goes up every, five hundred dollars every five years. You did it for everyone, including appointed officials except elected.
You don't have Clay County.
They only do merited officers.
Are you kidding me?
No. That's probably what you said that too.
Are we including merited officers in that too?
No, no, they already get it. Everybody gets longevity in our county.
Merited officers aren't gonna get taken extra on top of that.
Yeah, I'm just.
I just didn't know why you, okay, yeah.
This is another way that you can compensate.
Well, then you have to do that for every elected official.
Everyone who's eligible for longevity.
And what's the eligibility to do? Is it five years?
Five years, ten years, fifteen years. Well, you know, it goes up every five years.
So it'd be elected officials on their second term?
Yes. Most counties do it.
I'm, I'm in, Charlie, as far as doing a raise for this position, I don't know if that's.
Do you, do you have a copy of this? You can have my copy. I've already seen it. You wanna see it?
Yeah.
It's, uh, several counties do do it. I, I love the way you just mentioned was, is just so that we know, since they are doing it, they obviously haven't gotten dinged by D L D F or state board accounts for it.
No, I attached all the responses.
I mean, the only thing I think it's like what you said, Dave, we, we can't be raising, and it's all crazy, is later on, you get somebody, and I'm not saying that somebody's gonna be better, worse, or whatever, but I mean, how does that make it fair for everybody else?
Right, I mean, but the thing is, and we would also wanna make a note that we go back and revisit, because the thing is, is that one of the things that Bill personally suggested was put a, a, a range on, but for an elected official, no, when they start, when they start to run, it has to be, no, they're gonna get paid. So we would wanna revisit this too.
Oh, that, that not, that's not just when they run. You cannot lower or make higher.
During the term.
No, during the year period. Once you set salary ordinance, you can't change it.
But what I'm saying is we would also wanna let that, let them know if they're gonna get, Bill's leaving payers are going back to something, um.
How hard would it be for him to get certified? Then you can justify it.
I think, I think they're, they're talking about, they're, they're talking about, about P L S probably in certain cases, which is a certain, was a license fair?
Hard to get it?
It's, it's probably to four-year degree. If they're talking about that, this was brought up to me the other day, somebody work about this, so I knew about it.
Because I thought about this too, like, I know what I'm with that is like, raise it up to forty-nine thousand as a max for, and then two-thirds of that. So Bill maybe like make it so he has a thousand extra, um, at the two-thirds, but then whatever the other third would be, that would be the upper end if he had to get a surveyor that that might occur to surveyor around that is certified.
But forty-nine thousand, what's two-thirds of forty-nine?
Thirty-two, thirty-two thousand, eight thirty.
That's what I'm saying. How do we get there? Like, what's another third? I'm saying, at his current, they have forty-one, six seventy-two. What's another third of that?
We're cutting this paid if we do two-thirds of fifty.
It would be like sixty something.
It'd be thirty, yeah. It'd have to be, oh no, it'd have to be.
Forty-one, a third of forty-one.
It'd be seventy thousand. You'd have to have, oh my God, you'd have to have like, you'd have to have eighty thousand.
Thirteen, thirteen, two.
You'd have to have like eighty-five thousand to get into that fifty-eight, the two-thirds.
No, no, not fifty-eight. How would we get him at forty-one? Just to.
Forty-one?
Yeah, I think that would be like, uh, fifty-eight or something like that.
No.
It's not forty-one. You gotta add in twelve hundred too, because that is a part of his salary.
No, that's separate, isn't it? Cause it used to, it used to be, when I was, when I was affair.
It still comes to the salary.
There would be two different, there would be my pay was elected officials and that was on top of it.
It's, it's here separate.
Yeah.
But as far as his payroll, that comes through the salary.
So it'd be. So it'd be like sixty. It's gonna be like, it's gonna be like sixty-eight, sixty-nine thousand. If you wanna take.
No, it couldn't be, because then it would be fifty. We're getting down to forty. How do we get down to forty-two, two hundred?
There would be.
Forty-two, eight hundred. It's gonna be like fifty, would it?
That's what I'm saying. If you do, if you do the longevity pay, that would give him fifteen hundred, two thousand increase too, and it wouldn't give the next person.
If we just gave it to him or if we gave everybody?
Two-thirds of sixty thousand. Yeah, you, you'd have to be, you'd have to be like it's sixty-two thousand to get, to get there.
Yeah, we're prepared to put that in, even if it was trying to, to get somebody like that, I don't know. Well, sounding like that is kind of the easier way to do it. We can change the salary ordinance too, two years down the road if we don't like this longevity thing. We can take that back. It's as long as it's a year in advance. It sounds like that's the, uh, the easier flow.
Okay.
And we, I mean, and even, even though it's by statute, two-third, I mean, nobody's picked up on it yet. Like, if you don't wanna say, okay, we're gonna make the.
Well, I told them, we're not gonna take it back. We're not gonna take it back, you know? So like, if he's already there.
I mean, it doesn't matter. We've already, we've already been brought up in a public meeting what it is, so.
Right, I mean, we know we're wrong, and we can't go backwards from it. It was just a mistake.
Yeah.
So, um, Mark feels more warm about that, about trying the longevity. Rachel seems happy about that. Um, now, I will say, when I went to the auditors conference, the auditors conference, the speakers said, try to be creative on how you can give benefits to your employees. That is a benefit. Even though they're elected officials, they could still walk away from it. You know what I mean? They can still.
Well, you're enticing current employees to run. I mean.
To run again, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not run again, even just to run.
To run, yeah, cause they know what could happen, isn't that right? It's an incentive. And we could always change it back.
Oh, that's an interesting twist. I didn't even think about that. Have a ten-year employee that runs for office.
And then their, their pay decreasing.
Then their, then their incentive pays the fifteen-year if they make a second term.
Yeah, but you're, but you're telling a current employee, like, say actually that's been here fifteen years. I want you to run for office, but you're gonna get paid fifteen thousand or ten, fifteen hundred dollars less because we're not gonna give you longevity anymore. Thanks for working for our company, but if you run for an elected official, eh, so you're on your own.
This is one of those things over here, tell me it's only gonna cost six thousand and it's gonna cost sixty thousand, right?
It's only.
Oh, I made a mistake. I had one zero missing or something. I mean, you don't know the way, if you give them another thousand or two thousand bucks, then you've got a whole stream of other elected officials that could legitimately say, hey, I worked during COVID, you know, I did this or that.
So, 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 so why was, so why was the, the two thousand twenty-one, forty-two, zero, fourteen and the two thousand twenty-two? Oh, because he projected that much. Okay, that makes sense. All right.
So wait a minute, you're right. It was adopted more. What, what did you figure out was the reason? Why did he get forty-two, oh, fourteen to twenty-one?
Because of the twelve hundred dollars.
Oh. No, it was because of the extra paycheck that.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
In twenty twenty-one, we had twenty-seven pays.
It shouldn't make a difference if you get twenty-six pays, thirty pays, fifteen pays. If you're supposed to make this one year, that's what it is.
Brad argued that with the auditor he lost, so we're past that.
I know me, I get paid bi-weekly. If I get twenty-seven checks, I still make the same.
We're past that one. Brad advocating for that.
You are salary.
No, I'm not. I'm hourly. I'm hourly.
Have you ever tried to argue with her not, it gets you no more?
I know Brad. I, I should know better. I'm sorry.
Brad, what are your feelings, um, a, a, a little bit of extra for just um, the assessor, or I'm sorry, the surveyor or doing longevity for everybody? Rachel's promising it's only a six thousand dollar hit to the budget, not sixty, or six hundred or something.
Well, I think that with all the solar stuff he's doing, he needs a little something, but how we're gonna get it, I don't know. I'm not against the, uh, longevity. But that's gonna give like you and I a ten percent and a twenty percent pay increase.
So we're gonna go from two hundred to two fifty? Is that what you're saying?
Twenty-five.
I agree with you. I've always been, you know, I've always been an advocate of the council staying flat. Our, our colleagues have always been okay with that, but I will say in other counties, council makes a lot more money. Um, so, but I, I do recognize that. Um, are we also, are we also saying? Are we also, are we also saying like, just the longevity and some back to the surveyor's budget, like, do we think like we should throw him an extra thousand? Plus the longevity?
So.
Like, what what are you, what is?
So 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 the five percent for his budget should be what, forty three, seven fifty five, seven fifty six, right? Let me see, forty one, six, seven, two, time.
Five percent pay increase included, elected officials.
Yeah, so so fi- five percent pay increase would be forty three thousand, seven hundred fifty five dollars and sixty cents, okay? That's what that would be.
What would his longevity add to that?
I believe fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred, so that would take him to.
I don't think he's up to two thousand.
Did you say fifteen?
Yeah, I think it's.
How how does how does the longevity work?
After five years, you get five hundred. After ten years, you get a thousand. After fifteen years, you get fifteen hundred.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um. So that takes him to forty five, two fifty five.
Yeah.
Forty five, two fifty five. Okay, so that covers a little bit of his longevity. I mean, how do people feel about another thousand for him, that's extra work that he did? So.
I have no problem with that.
Let's hear from Howard, because Howard interacts with the surveyor a lot. Howard, how would you feel about longevity plus a thousand, Howard?
So base pay would be forty four, seven fifty five.
Forty four, seven fifty five.
That's base pay.
Yeah.
Plus fifteen hundred dollars longevity, plus twelve hundred dollars.
No. Base pay would be four, forty three, seven fifty five.
No, if you did an extra thousand, he's saying.
I'm saying we also put a thousand for all this.
Oh, they plus the longevity?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't realize that.
But I wanted to ask how Howard felt about that.
I've been sitting here, I've been thinking about this for a while, and. The longevity pay, if we give longevity pay, it's gotta be to include all the elected officials. And. Then I got thinking that we're not typically in the business to raise elected official salaries midterm, but. And then you think, well, you raise his, what are the other elected officials gonna say? And what what's kind of just dawned on me is. I I understand some of them with the COVID stress. But with the solar panels, the solar situation the last couple of years, Bills worked really hard. And, uh. I think a thousand is the minimum we should do for him. I I would have no problem with the couple. I understand. Everybody's entitled. But my point is, he's worked exceptionally hard getting this solar stuff off the ground in my in my mind's eye. So I'm fine with the thousand. I would be fine, I would be fine with a couple thousand, and I know I'm gonna hear it too, and they say, well, how come the other elected officials aren't getting the raise? Well, because the last couple of years, he's really busted himself to get this done. It's a lot of work to that.
He's taking the lead on this, and don't forget last.
But if they've been an elected official for a while, they're gonna get a raise if they get a long tip.
Right, yeah.
That's.
I mean, if I I got thinking about.
As far as Bill goes, yeah, I I think we also forget, you know, there was a period of a couple of months where he stepped up for, um, when we were looking for a highway.
Yeah, so, okay, what if you split it? What if you split Howard's, and how would the commissioners feel about fifteen hundred as opposed to two thousand and split the difference? Would you feel, how would you feel about that, Howard? I'm sorry, Andrew.
Yeah, I'm I'm fine with that. I I guess my point is, if we took the extra work that he's done over and beyond. And had to pay part time help for that, it'd be more than, more than what.
Man, it's still ten thousand less than what he's looking for.
Well, I know, I just, that can't happen.
I'm just trying to do some backward math here to cover our wazoo's, okay? If we go back to the four, forty four, seven fifty five, okay? Okay, so. If you, if you set the salary of the surveyor. At sixty six thousand, seven hundred ninety nine, two thirds is that.
Oh, okay, so it leaves that door open, because here's what I was gonna say. That we put a note to actually say that whatever we're making bills, so if we had another five hundred, that would be. Forty five, two fifty five, that that is in the future gonna be for a certified and. Non-certified.
So it'd be forty five to two fifty five.
Forty five, two fifty five, and then, of course, he'll get his longevity, but I'm saying a new one. That we follow the statute that says it has to be two thirds, and we have to do that for other departments. We need to look at that when we bring the new elected official in. I mean. I don't know if he's.
Okay.
Or not, does he turn out?
Yeah, no, there's no.
Okay.
Okay, so, so, okay, here, here's something here, if we made. If we made the salary for the surveyor. Sixty seven thousand, five hundred forty four dollars, okay? You take two thirds of that, that comes out to be forty five thousand, two hundred fifty five dollars.
Are you kidding me?
No, I I figured it out.
That's amazing.
I figured it out.
So, are you making a motion for?
Well, I, somebody check my math first to make sure.
Well, I I think we're talking fifteen hundred for him. We're not gonna say anything about sixty seven for now. We'll just leave that. Actually, we'll go back and we'll say forty five, two fifty five is the certified amount, Clay Cowling only does forty four.
For licensed, yes.
For license.
But so so we we can't say the amount for licenses.
We won't say that, but I but you're right, though, at least we we're still in that range.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, the the range for a license would be, would be, it would be sixty seven, five forty four.
Right. Okay, so that's perfect, like the numbers.
Yeah, yeah.
So, those two thirds, how long has that been?
I I had.
Probably for a long time.
Probably a long time, but she didn't tell us.
Yeah.
It's a long time, though.
It's not potentially.
Well, we're not gonna reverse it.
Yeah.
So he's grandfathered him, yes, unless unless for some reason, the board of account and DLG have come back and say we have to.
That's that, that's why, that's why I'm saying. To keep that in the back of our minds.
That we can't take it up to sixty seven.
If we, if we make it sixty seven, five forty four, so.
If if somebody says something.
And then the sixty seven percent is, the two thirds is that.
So it would be forty five, two fifty five, man, and then, actually, he'll get his longevity and he'll get twelve hundred. So forty five, two fifty five.
How does the, they get that paid just in their paycheck or one payment? In the paycheck, okay, so.
Forty five, two fifty five.
Plus fifteen?
Plus plus fifteen, so that would put him at forty six, seven fifty five, plus he'll get twelve hundred, so in reality, he's at forty seven, nine fifty five technically. That's, that's a pretty nice jump.
Now, would that be, would the five percent increase, does that include in the forty five?
Well, the 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 five percent increase is forty three, is forty three, seven fifty five. Okay, that that's what the five percent increase is, is right, that's what that is.
Right, we're saying, we're saying at fifteen hundred on that, that's where it comes to forty five, two fifty five.
Okay, that's the forty five, two fifty five, okay? So then you're saying there'd be longevity on top of that?
Yes. Longevity will be another fifteen.
And the longevity would not figure into that forty five, two fifty five, you know, that would revert back to that number that I originally said.
Right, yeah, if somebody gets elected, if he doesn't run, whatever.
It's gone, yeah.
Okay, so if somebody wants to make a motion to that adjustment for the elected official. Uh, let's see, I don't think anything else was really that aligned, I kept there, he only races, feel over the tires, which makes sense. Uh, I don't know why he's racing internet, though, you know, why he's doing that.
Uh, it's it's just.
Everybody's racing there.
No, he's putting, he's getting rid of cell phone, so he doesn't have cell phone, and like.
Oh, okay, he's putting internet.
Yes.
What is it, what is it, David? It's forty seven?
Forty seven.
No, it'll be forty five, two fifty five, from from fifty eight, seven fifty six.
Okay, okay, yeah, because I noticed he took out the seller, some of their phones completely.
You put that in the internet services.
Alright, that that's fine.
Forty five, two fifty five, plus longevity.
Which he has on, which he has on.
The twelve hundred dollars for for the other two.
But for, but for now, for the budget, though, changing the budget, you're going from fifty eight, seven fifty six to forty five, two fifty five.
Yeah, and also, we wanna do a mention for longevity for elected officials.
We'll do that at the end.
Okay.
Don't let us forget. Actually, we'll do that.
So, are are we gonna keep, are we gonna keep longevity for him in this budget, or are we taking it out?
We're. Um, the longevity in his budget is for his clerk, so I need to add longevity, more longevity to his budget.
So, somebody will make a motion with your adjustments.
Yes.
And going to forty five, two fifty five.
So that's thirteen thousand, five hundred and one less.
Could you just make a a motion to add longevity to the budgets?
Across the board, yeah, okay, so if somebody wanna do that, just so that's out of the way, and make the longevity for elected officials.
Who is, who is, who is not getting longevity this time? Just the elected officials? Everybody, all merit officers, non-merited, everybody.
Appointed.
Everybody.
Yes, everybody, all your directors, everybody's getting one.
I don't know if I can make that motion, I'm not gonna say I'm gonna vote against it, but. I don't know. And I've heard you say it plenty times, when you run for office, you know what you're running for.
Yeah, I've always been an advocate for that, and. Honestly, I'm not looking out for myself one bit when I say this, and I wouldn't wanna do that to the other council, but I would, I would be willing to say, you know, not have the council approve on that for me.
No, you're not gonna do that, it's gonna be across.
But the amount is very low.
It's gotta be, it's gotta be one or all.
People like bring in.
It's gotta be one, it's gotta be one or all, you can't pick the two, so we do it for Dave, that's the only thing.
Plus, when I was at the auditors conference, the auditors conference, they, the speakers all said, look at creative things for, you know. Making things better for your employees.
Okay, so, so what would the budget, what would the budget be then?
Well, first, we're looking for a motion on just the longevity by itself, just to get that knocked out.
How are we gonna pay for it?
We're gonna submit it in the budget. I mean, the one thing that could dial back is the five percent for everybody, that could change.
Okay.
So even for Bill, that could change, so the longevity will be certain in this case, so, and you know what? I'll tell you what, instead of throwing you on it, I'll make, I can make a motion, I'll make a motion that we did longevity, I rarely ever do make motions myself, unless Howard's giving me a look like he.
I've never, I've never heard you make one, so.
It's very rare, but but I can make motions, I just can't, uh. Oh, but I can't make a motion as a president, so I'll make that motion that we accept longevity for elected officials. And I will say, well, I'll make that motion first. Second, that was second from Don, and I will say, as part of the discussion on that, we did consult the commission about that as well, so. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye, I'll vote for it, I just wasn't making a motion.
Brad, are you aye or nay on that?
He can't.
We can't vote.
Well, sorry, we can't vote, I think I can picture a bit.
I'll be aye.
Back to the surveyor, yeah, but I still wanna know if you're in support of it or not. Um, so back to the surveyor, um, you would be making a motion, unless you know the number, Todd, you do pretty good with the calculator, right, you're. You're making the motion for forty five, two fifty five.
Yeah, which which is actually thirteen thousand, five hundred and one dollars less than what. He submitted. Um. I would say, okay, I'll make the motion, if we accept the surveyor's budget zero, 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 six. As is with the exception of the elected official going from seventy, seven, fifty eight, seven, five, six to forty five, two fifty five. For the two thousand twenty three budget.
We have a motion, um, is there a second? We have a second from Kay, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And is there any opposed? Did you wanna let Charlie know about that, or did you want him to know after the meeting, how that came out? You want me to let him know?
We need to prove the other one, but with the ten twenty three.
Yes, you do.
This one went down a couple hundred dollars for. For whatever reason.
Yeah.
Um. I'll make a motion that we approve surveyor budget zero, zero, two, three, as submitted.
So motion, is there a second? A second from Howard, and all this still in there too, obviously, Todd, I don't know if everybody knows this, but Todd is former surveyor, so he's kind of our resident expert on the surveyor side. That comes to that too, so.
Yeah.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Okay, the prosecutor, tell us about anything here that. Who am I looking for, Rachel?
I don't, I don't know.
Say, I I haven't seen anything either, I think. I think you can very comfortably just make a motion at all. The auditor is the one that I have on.
What?
Yeah, where is that?
There's a couple things there.
No, there is not.
Alright. Here we go, I'll make a motion that we accept the prosecutor's budget, um, zero, zero, eight, zero, zero, three, two. Forty nine, zero, seven, and nine, one, one, seven, as submitted.
Motion by Todd, is there a second? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Uh, did you share with us manual that your budget was?
Not yet.
Yeah.
Budget was.
You're late, you're late.
Yeah. Hey, now, in my auditor folder, I don't just have mine, I have a lot of miscellaneous.
Are there any of the miscellaneous that we should be drawn attention to?
We better look at since he's submitted.
The the only thing I have is for the park recreation, um, the thirty six thousand is still in there.
Ah, so again, um, and Cameron was here, so she knows, but I did, and Kay was witness to this. I don't know if you got on Zoom, five dollars or not. Um, anyways, Kay and I went to the, um, park board meeting, as I mentioned, and we did let them know that we would not be, um. Renewing the seat, that that was the startup money, and that was the only intention for that. Um, but, as I said during the budget hearing, that Rick asked to to leave that at thirty two thousand for the repairment, so they could continue to approve it. Oh. So while you're looking at these, I'm looking at this as just on something. I I have been going out there quite a bit now, since I mowed the grass, and one time, a lot of people called, or whatever else, you know, I just been checking, I wanna see that really. Be successful for it. I did look at what Davy Tree Service did to the bad, to the bad, they dumped seven loads of chip, and then were supposed to trim trees, and never trimmed trees. Did the park, the park board thought they got ahold of you about writing Davy Tree Service a letter and saying that we want that removed, are you aware of that? Just giving you a heads up.
Yes, I haven't seen it come through yet.
And they're not finding a way to get a hold of Davy Tree Service, because what we'd like them to do is either, A, because making a deal now for tree trimming is not even on the agenda. But they need to get their garbage out of there, but one of the options is, if they wanna get an estimate from our highway department to remove it, we could do that, I think, as a, as an option. Um, or they could. I'm just saying, if Davy Tree Service wants to pay our fee for that, that's one option, or they can get a private contract to do it. Again, property, it's unparked property, it's in the back, in the back corner, they dumped at least seven loads of mulch. And they're big, and now they're all rotten and smashed down in there, and we need that space for other things, for pure storage and. It's right where we can normally store the pure ground, well, we've seen it, but it's kind of like cracked.
So she's fixed it, get suited out of it.
Okay, yeah.
Absolutely.
No, I don't see that.
But. The camera before, Camp Hagner's just right down the street, Cliff Rose and Rover Town does, there's a lot of escalating companies that is. Can't just daily bother with that whole. I just always wanna go down, let's go down out there, as a possibility.
No.
Did you, did you guys find anything in there? I mean, I don't think the council budget.
So you're saying that seat, that that was taken out of there, right?
Well, look at your motion.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, so that was, so that was one, one, twelve, the the thirty four, thirty, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I didn't know what you wanted to put for the, um, economic development, so I left it the same as.
That's me, what I wanna put here, I'll tell you. Wait, zero. Okay, so you know what, let's put the easy ones that can be separated out. Auditors transfer fee is one that's. You can vote on and vote.
You can vote on auditor two, what is wrong with that?
Okay.
Oh, oh, two and forty nine, oh, two.
Let's make a consideration then for forty nine, oh, two and oh, 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 two. It was just an increase in salaries.
Alright, I'll make a motion that we, that we approve the auditors fund zero, 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 two, and forty nine, oh, two, as submitted.
The motion, is there a second?
Second.
I think Kay actually beat you this time, so. Hey, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed, I'll just put you automatically on the next motion, Don. Um, so, one, 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 two. You know, I'm reluctant about the firewall too, um, because I wanna get that sorted out, because you, you said you moved on.
I'm real, I'm real reluctant about the US thirty coalition too, I'll make a motion to strike that immediately.
Um, so I will say, though, interestingly.
It's about trying to make thirty into an interstate. It's about trying to make thirty into an interstate.
We had it, we had a, a, this, uh, uh, EMA meeting, and we had, uh, what's her, Rachel from Rachel Greenwood, Rachel Greenwood. That's right, we were, we were a communications meeting, I mean, actually not LUPC. No, it was LUPC, and she, she comes to vote. She said it is going to happen.
Yes.
She said there are, it's argued, a state plan. I couldn't believe, I nearly fell out of my chair too.
Earlier this year.
Really?
Funded.
I was shocked too, Todd. I, I couldn't believe it. That's not what I was.
I mean, you see that being a benefit to us, right? I mean, that's just gonna block access to our county.
That's why I've been engaged with the coalition.
We're gonna do whatever.
Because the plans.
The plans now are J terms, right?
And not even.
Not even for us.
Yeah, and so that's.
Even, even though it's on there, it could be.
So that, there it is, it winds up looking like old dirt.
It could be twenty years out.
We're on stretch and start.
That's, that's the thing, you know, it could be twenty years out.
They said five years, and when I, we had a semi rep on thirty, the state highway supervisor said, it is definitely in the works.
Rachel said it would be functional in five years. I couldn't believe that she said that. Rachel, I like Rachel, like she's, I don't think she was full of land.
Yeah, I don't know that the whole stretch will be done, but it will, a, a large portion should be done.
So what is the coalition money funding, our six thousand dollars?
A lot of it is lobbying against.
Okay, so lobbying against us as well.
Lobbying for it. And lobbying to make sure that INDOT's plan reflects our desires.
That's why we have Jim Presle.
There was a time when Jim was the one, one of the, not so much.
He's, he's, he's the head of transportation.
Yeah.
I don't see how that would benefit Stark County. It'll be six hundred and thirty, we close.
Depends what the plans are.
But Mark's saying.
They, they can sit.
Without any input, it could be.
They're, they're, they say they can do it now, but they'll have five years environmental studies and everything else, I mean.
It was. That would just say, yeah, so there are stretches of thirty.
There'll be environmental, there'll be environmental everywhere. I'm looking at the eighteen month, at the eighteen month laying list, which is three years out. If they, if it's gonna be open in five years, it would be started in less than, in three years. And there is absolutely nothing. Zero projects.
Well, I think it sounds like Howard's on board with you, with your thoughts. Maybe we feed the fire well, try to get the fire well taking care of a contingent, a contingent.
Yeah, because the plan is.
Money.
Yeah, because we're. Looking into options with fire well.
Yeah. And one of the options could be, like, like I said, I wanna hear RMC. I wanna hear why they couldn't charge us, because we met with the fiber guys. Like, they could help us on that. Why couldn't they just charge us the rate that they charged our, Norton? And then it'd probably be a thousand, instead of charging us that on-demand, you know, amount. But I think, I, I think if we left the fire well, then we could, I think something will happen with fire well, then we can think about using that seventy-five hundred for other things like.
What is, what was the amount for?
Six.
Third.
But normally, they ask for ten. But they must have.
That's what I'm watching for. That, that I wouldn't support, no. Cause that's what they were charging for, not just a county, but if it's, a municipality affected by.
Well, why don't we do this? Why don't we leave the fire well? We'll take the thirty-six off for the beach, or for the park board. Leave the seventy-five hundred though, and then, like I said, if Mark gets it worked out with RMC, then there's seventy-five hundred there that could be shifted over.
So you're taking out the US thirty coalition?
Yeah, taking that out with, with the hopes of, and then if it does come, we'll find it. Six thousand isn't that much where we can't.
I'll do some, I'll do some checking, meantime, with people I know in the higher than somebody's in, the road superintendent.
So basically, you would be making a motion of one, zero, zero, two, eight, eight, zero. Right? Is that right? One, zero, zero, four, eight, eight, zero, right?
Just say S presented minus thirty-six and six.
Okay. Did you hear that, Todd?
No, it'd be minus, it'd be minus forty-two thousand, not thirty-six, six.
Thirty-six and six, she said, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, my God.
Okay, so, um, I may make a motion that we approve the seated one, one, twelve, location zero, 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 as submitted, minus forty-two thousand, which is thirty-six thousand off parking recreation and six thousand off the US thirty coalition.
And motion, is there a second? Second. Howard being two. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any opposed? Okay, tell me about Cube Capital. We heard something at the auditor's meeting about re-advertising, yes.
Uh, that's when you're changing numbers.
Okay, well, which we would be if we went, so we, then we would, yeah, changes, yeah, so I'm taking one, one, three, eight, the council. Help us add something to the pile here that we can, uh, let's see. The elected official training. We've never hardly used any of that.
Oh, I am so sorry that your elected officials like going to trainings now.
Who's encouraging them to do that?
Bird Day.
You know.
Trying to think of who I usually see.
They're gonna find true.
She threw you right under that one. Brad, Brad, you wanna jump in there? Okay, so.
Yes, I did go to lots of.
Let's, let's pull commissioners.
Yes, I think it's.
Page one and two and set that off aside. Let's do that last. But, let's look at one, one, three, eight, council, one, two, one, seven, soil and water and EMA. All of those are pretty static. If anybody have.
What's your state, one, one, three, eight, what?
One, uh, one, one, three, eight, council, one, two, one, seven, and soil and water. I'm thinking that it would be fruitful, and EMA, and EMA. I'm thinking it would be fruitful to make a blanket motion on those, because they're all applying.
Are you listening, Todd?
I, I, yes, I'm listening, but I'm looking, okay?
And then keep commissioners' page one and two off to the side, so we can.
I got a little bit more.
I don't think there's crazy either. There's.
All right.
Let's at least look at it, witnesses.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the council zero, zero, three, three. The county elected training fund, one, two, one, seven. And the Cube Capital of one, one, three, eight, and the soil and water, location zero, zero, three, one, as submitted.
And EMA.
Oh, and also, a little bit first. Okay, and the EMA zero, zero, one, eight. Is that right?
Yes, it is.
Say it again.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Kay. All those in favor, aye. Is there any opposed? Okay, the last one. Well, we also have JLC, right?
Hey, don't, don't, don't we somewhere at some point in time have to put in more money for longevity someplace in the budget?
You made that motion for a blanket across the board, so I'm gonna be adjusting.
Okay.
Everybody.
All right, that's fine. Okay. Um, I'm good.
Mark, was there anything that you wanted? I, I don't, I don't know that I saw anything in yours that, uh.
He added in council.
Yeah, council.
That's the only major change.
I know the council agent came for that. I, you know, I've seen some improvement there. I know they wanna change some things.
Yeah, I think we should give the new leaderships at least the same chance the older leadership had to feel.
The only thing I'll say about that, I'm not making a motion, but the only thing I'll say about that is we, we have over the years wanted the council on changing to be self-sufficient. But they do have some new things they wanna try. So I, I don't know that we're guaranteeing it every year, but at least for next year or so.
And it's not anywhere near with the movement question.
Yeah. Wait a minute.
And the commission question.
What's that? Oh, yeah.
Economic development, keep the same as this year. Todd said.
I mean, now, is it my turn again? Okay. All right, I'll make a motion that we approve commissioner's budget zero, zero, two, five, as submitted.
Our motion, is there a second? Second. Second from Howard. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Okay, so we're, we're making some halfway decent time, not, not quite as fast as we forecasted.
You forecasted, I said.
We have some minutes listed here, but it's somebody else's.
I gotta, now I gotta move into your little session.
Okay, I'm just making sure you had them, because you were looking at some of the things earlier. Um, is you, I think you said Jim Fernandez was not coming, correct?
Yeah, he is.
He is coming.
Cause I already, yeah.
You see, he's coming, any ideas on what he's looking for?
I'm giving it to you.
Possibly.
Yeah.
First scale.
About thirty. I have it. If, if he would be patient, I'm gonna give it to him.
I'm just thinking that we can call.
Expand on what you're telling me.
That is about thirty.
Oh.
I asked him.
Oh, yeah, see? So it's just like I said.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
That's why, that's why.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay, so while we're waiting for Jim Fernandez to get his text. Twenty thousand?
Is that more?
No, that's already been from us.
Yes. You guys approve this?
That, as part of that forty grand set aside.
Oh, it is, this is.
Forty grand set aside for what?
So then how much is left to that forty thousand that we set aside? Like, we didn't guarantee, like, skill gave that back to us, and we've been using it for economic development, not for skill. Like, that's, that's how we work with that, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I agree.
Uh, economic development only asked for.
Well, I mean, economic development other than, you know, use it by through the end of the year, not use it, you know what I mean? Like, have it available. So why, there's nobody else asked for it. My thing, obviously, doesn't have it for that. It's just, we still have six months left.
Yeah. Sorry, close, I don't have grand as well. Well, I don't, I don't remember, because, uh, leave that, that eight grand, they didn't take the whole amount.
Did you have about thirty-two thousand dollars of that forty thousand?
The only, the only thing was, is like, we talked about utilizing that through the end of the year, you know, like, going it out, so. But if they were the only ones requested, I think they should get it then too. Like, you know what I'm saying? Like, we put the word out there, but we had that there, and we hadn't, didn't have a request, so. While we're waiting for Jim, I mean, in your eyes, would you be opposed to a table on that? Just kinda keeping an eye on it, keeping it an art, on a consideration, or do you, are you saying you wanna?
I think.
I gotta see that paper here. Since I don't remember the details.
Yes.
Because they already have the training, they already have the textures, you know, it's like. Yeah, well, we, well, we.
Oh, yeah, a lot, uh, yeah, the big thing was the security. Cause.
Yeah, I, I said, Kurt, I did say, I don't know what she wants. I said, we could do that while. I mean, they only, they don't need it till next year, if you're right.
Right.
Some of it, I know, like, I know the security party wanted to get them, but that was in the wake of some of the, you know, shooting.
Who owns the building? Who owns the building? Is skill owning?
Building?
We don't, do we?
No, that's, um.
Isn't thirty.
That is economic development.
There you go.
I would like to come before the boards in the future for that funding as well, but we don't own that.
That's just what I asked.
Why wouldn't we maintenance a building that we don't own?
Who owns it?
Skill.
Skill or? One of them. I mean, I, I'm pretty sure they got some.
Well, he's. All I'm saying is, is that it's, it's only, you know, it, it's, it's not even July yet, you know, like. But again, I'm with Mark, like, if nobody else asked for it, why not? You know, so I mean, it doesn't hurt. I just, it might be too early to spend. And we only have twelve thousand left, or that's fundamentally one stretch.
Do you wanna do my stuff first while we wait?
Yeah, let's do that, since we, we don't know.
So I have the minutes for you first, and then after you get done with the minutes, I have some other stuff.
I have the minutes before you that you've, for us, that you've seen, um, from May sixteenth, if someone would like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from you.
Have a motion from Kay, is there a second? Second from Howard. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed?
And then those are the, after, after joint session.
Then the ARPA joint session, which you have also seen, um, from April eighteen, um, look for a motion for that. A war here for that.
I would hear for that. What was it?
Are you making a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for the ARPA joint.
So is there a second?
I can't put that, I wasn't.
I'll second.
A second from Kay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
There any opposed?
Right? I don't sign it because I was here on Zoom, but.
Right.
Okay.
Were you, were, were you were on Zoom?
I was on Zoom.
Yeah, then you signed.
Okay. Yeah, I was on Zoom.
So bring it back here.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so, um, this is the ordinance adopting the ARPA plan. You guys need to, if you are, just email, but I will give you a copy as well.
Who are we doing next?
The ARPA plan that is going to be.
It was stuck with the travel expense policy.
Yeah, that's next, that's.
Um, I have before me the ordinance that we already discussed for the, um, where we were parking the ARPA money, as prepared by Justin. Um, I possibly entertain a motion for the ordinance adopting the Stark County American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA approved expenditure plan, ordinance number that will be given of twenty-two.
Um, I will make a motion that we approve the ordinance adopting the Stark County ARPA approved expenditure plan as written.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Howard. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? And you need a signature on it.
On.
Mine has no.
Yeah, mine.
And then, you wanna talk about the travel expense policy while we start signing?
Yes, so I've been asked by a few department heads to come before you to increase what the travel policy has for county reimbursement for the substance allowance. Right now is twenty dollars a day, breakfast six dollars and fifty cents, lunch eight dollars and fifty cents, dinner thirteen dollars.
More than I get.
From, from two. You have to adopt it.
No, if you change it, you. A few departments say that's not enough. So I was asked to come before you.
Twenty-eight dollars a day.
For overnight. Six fifty for breakfast, eight fifty for lunch, and thirteen dollars for dinner, if it's not overnight. Other, otherwise, you, you have twenty dollars for the entire day.
I know, that's.
It's not, no.
It should be thirty-five.
Okay.
Mine is less, mine's less than that, than that right there.
They took mine, they're, they're cheating where I work, they took it up to fifty.
Ours is, well, mine's a lot, mine, really cheap.
I think thirty-five would be a good number. I'll make a motion for thirty-five.
That's thirty-five for the overnight. Do you wanna change what, what each?
What was, what was the?
Six fifty for breakfast, eight fifty for lunch, and thirteen dollars for dinner.
Twenty for dinner. That's my motion. Thirty-five for overnight and increasing the dinners to twenty.
Okay.
Do you think that sounds fair? You travel the most.
Usually mine's never included in my conference. What do you mean I travel the most? Pretty bird that travels. True, just because I was gone Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday for, for conference, no. No, you're getting to our reserve here today. So that's your motion?
So we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second from Kay, is there any discussion? I think you have to discuss your time. I don't, no.
I just think.
I think it's, I think the way it is was fine. That's all my, my thing.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed?
I abstained.
And one abstention. Three ayes and one abstention, Kay. Rachel.
So it didn't pass, it's not a majority.
I did that. Uh, well, I guess, yeah, I didn't have to. I made the motion, so I, for I, Rachel. I was the scene of your paying attention, because you're always talking to Justin and not me.
I put both of you on the spot.
Um. I think, you know, we, let's do, uh, talk manual next, and wait for Mr. Fernandez. Uh, hitting up ID on that anyways, but I also wanna make sure we have it on the list. I think the commission has something today. He's right in front of you. Okay, I'm, I'm looking through you at.
Sure.
Did you guys have something else that you were gonna fund, that, that you were gonna bring to us, that you were gonna fund out of Cube Cap?
Oh, are you talking to him or to me?
Oh, BMS, but he's not on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's gotta be advertised even first. I thought, since Mark's here, I thought he might wanna bring that up.
Go ahead.
Sorry, go ahead now. Just Eric's still here. I, I thought maybe that they were gonna wait for that, too, but go ahead.
Matt Dune, all right, Jim Fernandez. Deputy Director of Skill. That's everybody today. So I'm, um, in front of the board here to try to get some appropriations for skill. Uh, we need some new promethium boards for our auto tech one and two. Promethium board is, uh, audio visual. Or it's similar to whiteboard, but you can cast videos on it or, um, for teaching. Ours are old. Um, I wrote on the sheet from two thousand and ten. Ours are old, um, I wrote on the sheet from two thousand and ten, um, we're having. Problems getting parts for them, so we would like to order new ones, I included estimates in your packet. Um, also our AC went down, we got a quote from a grass refrigeration that I've also included in your packet. And we need to uh, have that repaired prior to the students getting back. Um, also, um, I have on there that we have. Um, in the past, the co-op would not allow us to get textbooks. Through them and with the new director, we've been able to negotiate some things. So, we have been able to get the textbooks for welding. Six thousand, six hundred and eighty seven dollars, EMS needed new textbooks, which they are going to pay for and. Uh, four thousand, six hundred and eighty two dollars and the auto tech needed twenty additional. Um, textbooks, because we're gonna have twenty additional kids this year, so uh, three thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars, so. This school year, this coming school year, we have um, been able to save. Fourteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty nine dollars and fifty cents.
You say EMS is paying for it, you mean our EMS is paying?
No.
Yeah, I knew you had class, I just didn't know part EMS.
We visited, but we're not part of it.
Do you have an extra presence?
Um, so we were, before you got here, Jim, we were just kind of talking about. How soon, how soon do you need to know you have this? Because like we allocated that forty thousand, which was actually given back by skill, but. We kind of wanted to make that money stretch, you know, through the, the, the year and not spend all of it in kind of mid-year. But how soon do you need these visual boards? Like, like what would be the deadline to hit those?
Class starts August eighth, so we'd like to have them in place by then.
Okay, I, I think just, we were having some discussion before we got here, I think we feel like anything that has to do with your facility, that's more of an account, well, foundation thing than us, we don't own that building, so like. We're not interested in investing in repairs in the, in the real estate.
I agree, yeah.
Saying, um. Now these, now I, I'm only saying this too, because I'm looking at EMS director, because you got a lot of, got a lot of trouble. Changed the garage door openers because they were old, not because they were not functional, so you're saying these are starting to be also become not, right? So I, 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 I want, I want, I want to make him see that I, you know, I don't question just him.
One, one functional, each, each. Um, act included here. The um, state requires us to do different things and eventually currently have, don't align with the academics.
Wait a minute, you don't have the textbooks on here, you've only got AC.
Oh, no, what, what you asked me the textbooks. We had originally asked for them, but we've been able to get the co-op.
No, no, I'm asking all these visual panels, sorry. You already said you.
By August eighth. When school starts.
But I want to say is they're not functional.
Correct, one of them is somewhat, and the other one, not at all.
So this is only for two?
Yes, sir.
Brad, were you getting ready to say something? He just came off.
I just got back.
Okay, um, we were just uh, saying, there were, there was some sentiment in the council that. For the AC units that were not really that interested in getting involved with the real estate, with approving the real estate or fixing the real estate. One of the reasons we have no. Dog in that maintenance fight though, and we don't know if these conditions, air conditions were improperly maintained.
No, our building.
You know, it's not our, it's not our thing, but um, what I was asking uh, Mr. Fernandez before you uh, came back, Brad, was. Were the boards functional? There are two boards, one of them is not functional, the other one is hard to get parts for.
Correct.
I've seen individual panels, they do use those. They are, they are useful.
I mean, personally, I don't have a problem with those because we're investing in students.
Right.
And for the goodness of the county and the people.
And it's not attached to the building.
I'm with you about the, the air conditioner, like there's no way I could support that, it's not our building. I mean, it's not our building, plain and simple.
Are you making a motion for thirteen thousand five eighty?
I, I will make a motion that we approve the thirteen thousand, five eighty one for, for the visual aid boards.
We have a motion for thirteen thousand, five eighty one, is there someone that wants to make a second?
I'll second this.
We have a second from K, I'd like to also get a discussion from Don and Howard on this, and if Brad has anything to say. Do you guys have anything else to say about that?
We don't, go ahead, Don.
I do. We have to realize that the skill center out here is. Well, the best thing that this county has.
You realize we're voting for, correct? Like you realize that, we're not voting against, we're voting for.
I know, okay, just making sure.
No, I, I agree, Don, that's why I made the motion to invest in the kids.
Yeah, I, I.
Not the building.
These kids out there, it's amazing, it's amazing what you're doing.
And, and there's one other thing, you, you weren't here, but there was, there was a certain thing that happened. Involving skill that has left a very bad mouth at Dave and Mike.
Yes, and I will, you know, we need to bring that up back, sure, and I'll, and I'll be the one, because I was probably the most hoister of that. And you know, one of the reasons why we were very happy and very willing to have that forty thousand back too. So I'm gonna tell you, Jim, you're inherently one thing that is, and it will remain to. To perpetuate for me, a bad taste in my mouth, that a skilled organization had the opportunity to have this property by the tracks. And Larry and others brushed it off and said, oh, well, the proof will be some repairs or whatever else. The sad part is, is the skill center, I know why the skill didn't want, because they didn't want to affect their current grants and their current building and things like that. But they could have sold it just like the city's doing, so now the city has an asset. We funded skill, we put a lot of money in, in skill all these years, and skill passed on that, I will never forgive skill for that, the skill leadership. I don't want, but I don't want, I'm like Tom, I don't want to um, you know, hold it against the kids and say we want something extra like you're asking for.
That's why, that's why I made.
I personally will always have bad feelings about that deal.
Myself as well. It's not your.
I, 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 I think Brad has voiced similar, he's, he's on um, Zoom now, I think he's also voiced similar. It's obviously, you know, we have exceptions for that, but I'll go back to Howard if we have any discussion about the visual aid boards, you know.
In the past, you know, we, we, there are a couple of years, we had a rocky relationship with skill, that's not true, Paul, but I'd like to get off to a, a new beginning with skill. Starting with you, sir, I'm glad you're here.
Other than the property that they didn't take, were there other issues with skill?
We want to move forward with you.
That was a million dollars, so.
Yes, at least.
Yeah, so.
At least.
Um, I agree with the rest of the board.
I disagree with that, but.
If we don't own the building, we, we can't maintain it, but I certainly have no problem with the five, with the thirteen thousand, early kids.
You're saying you disagreed that that property is worth a million dollars?
I, I know they were trying to sell it for a million dollars, nobody bought it.
Would you say it's worth more than a hundred thousand dollars?
Oh, easily.
Would you say that skill could have used a hundred thousand dollars for your mission? Sure, because I honestly, I don't want to start arguing with you about that either, because then I'm gonna get aggravated.
Again.
I'm very upset about that, so I, I don't want to go down that road, so we want to move forward with you on that, so. So. We have a motion, second, we've had discussion, um, I think Don seconded that.
Yes.
Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? So we'll be expecting that from you, sir.
Yeah, I did, I seconded it.
Oh, I'm sorry, it was Kate.
You're going to be expecting what?
Well, well, we're expecting you to request those funds for approving your.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Twenty six. Okay, well, then that, that was everything I was asking.
My excuse now.
Yes, thank you. Sorry, I'd be so passionate. Uh, so, let's do clerk Manuel and then we'll finish with the, the Jack and.
And that's now? Yeah, here we go.
If you can make it really fast.
You gotta make it really fast, somebody.
No.
We'll try.
Yeah.
No matter what it is? I'll give over her.
See, the thing is, is, and while they're doing that, when we, when we set money aside like forty thousand to use it. Or we put ARPA money on there, we're not saying, hey, try to spend this, it's.
Yeah.
I know, we're, that we're.
Oh, what you're going to, what you're going to get.
Yeah.
Is.
Well, no, we talked about this. Oh, well, we, we did talk about it.
You, a hundred thousand dollars for scanning.
Right, so there was.
I need that, no, I need more.
That's not what it's.
Yeah, I wish, like we asked everybody when we were moving that ARPA money around on that, but.
Because what you were asking may be for some per perpetual.
Perpetual, yeah, right.
So she may not be, be fifty two.
Well, you and I discussed it, you said you were still gonna put something.
I know, but I. Got it. We have a hundred years, not like. A two inch sword.
Tell us the number.
So, I was gonna say, I'll let her do the, most of the tricks in here and I'll help as much as I possibly can. Uh, I put a visual aid in the back of there just because it's pieces of the digitization, so scanning and media convergence would be the most.
So it's a dollar a doctor. How much are your?
That's indexing.
That's indexing.
Indexing, okay.
And so for a sort of scanning, that's a third-party service that also could use our order to do that.
Is it the same service?
You index and now, now see. Here's the double edged sword, yeah, the election budget went through.
You told me you would take that out of that if you did that.
That indexing can be done by that.
Now you know where I'm coming from. That's why I said. When I saw you had this guy with you, I'm going. I'm talking about.
Yes, but, Riddler is the one, I didn't want to go with SB portals, which is the first uh, quote that I got from that was. Way more than this, if my election budget goes through, this would just be for the marriage license and the oversized documents that I can't scan. The RJO books, um, you will see that there is software at a cost of three thousand dollars per year. That would allow us to scan our own items in there, so.
And the Apex.
Every other year, when that position would be slower. I'm not saying that they would be completely slow, because you come over and follow me around for a day, you'll realize, no matter what time of year or what year it is, there's still plenty of work to do in that office. But. I can have not only the girls in my office, and you all know that uh, Tony left the judge's employment and came to my office full-time. So I'm down a half a staff person, because Judge and I shared Tony. But Judge was paying her a hundred percent. And I do not believe the judge is putting that person back in my office, so I will be short a half a person. So the easier things can be for my office and everything digital ties where it's easier to be found. Then the less I will be on you guys saying that I need more.
We have already debated this with you, so really I want to know the numbers, is it thirty seven thousand, three fifty nine? Is it seventy five plus seventy five plus twenty two, three fifty, is this, are these the numbers?
So the numbers break out in total form, so the first, so that's the light, so now it'd be just marriage records all the way back to eighteen. Eighteen, maybe two, alright, um, and then some volumes.
That's not indexing, marriage license.
So, let me stop speaking, Riddle, what is the total amount you're gonna be for what you want to do?
So the basic life packet will be just under that, so it's the first year comes out to twenty two, three fifty, then it drops down to seventy five hundred, seventy five hundred for the following years, and that's just the software. So that scanning is in there, so they're broke, they're broken down as media conversion twenty five. And that's marriage.
But what I'm saying is, we've already said. These are the, this is the bottom line, but worst case scenario is thirty seven, three fifty. Worst case scenario, right?
Yeah, that's, that's a toll all three years.
Yep, and that would be best case scenario, because that'd be the light, that's just marriage records, not RJOs.
So what's everything?
Yes, yes.
Everything that you want, lucky is the final.
We didn't want to knock you off your eyes, but.
Well, we can't, we don't know.
It's well into one hundred fifty thousand. If we go to.
That's why, that's why I've been saying it's a double. Edge sword, if the election budget went through.
Right.
Then it can be on the lighter side, it doesn't have to be the heavy side, because I'll have enough help.
So we're saying this, that's why I'm saying this is best case scenario, I'm saying.
Yeah, yep.
So, um. I think we already agreed that we would go this route, and that's one of the reasons why we want to route with the. Election budget, because we already knew all this, like we knew this was coming, this is. This still leaves enough that even if Mandy doesn't. Get to use as much of her perpetuation, there's still.
Hundred fifty thousand and fifty two thousand?
No, no. Thirty seven.
That's just for the marriage license.
She's gonna do the RJO?
I can do the RJO, RJO books as long as the election budget passed as presented.
So those can, it doesn't, this part of the Apex and.
So you want thirty seven, you want. And you are the. I don't mind if. This project goes over this a little bit, you all know I don't get near as much of my perpetuations on as retarders and perpetuation. But I am willing to use some of my money and my perpetuation fund to help this project.
Yes, you are.
This is why, I wasn't being, I knew you were compliant with what we asked for, no, I wasn't. Rachel's giving me a dirty look, I promise it'll be done by three thirty and it's almost.
Three thirty?
I know, I told him it'd go longer, he is, was saying.
No, I'm just joking, I, I'm.
I knew it wasn't gonna be over.
But have we been making motions somewhere or have you already approved?
I have, I have the contract ready to sign, I haven't signed it, I need.
So we just need to.
A hundred, no, no, you don't have to, you approved a hundred thousand dollars. If they don't go over that, you don't have to do anything.
That's what we originally, that's what we originally approved for, for.
Yeah, we did.
You have our blessing.
Yeah.
No, what if we go over that, then they would have to.
You should better start digging.
We're, we're not approving.
I can only dig so far, I'm like perpetually, and I.
I don't want to, I don't want to blow smoke up your rear on that, we're not going for that, so right now you're under it. You know what I'm saying? I'm not asking you to try to spend it, either, just to try to spend it, but we're not gonna go over that. Hundred thousand, we've already agreed on that.
Great.
No, that's how we allocate it, so.
Yeah, we said it's part of the ordinance.
But theoretically, you already said you could use some of your perpetuation fund, right now you don't have to. No, you don't have to.
As long as it.
There's enough there for the thirty seven, three fifty, we're saying that, like.
Mandy's.
Mandy still has enough too for the fifty two then, that's eighty nine, there's still almost eleven thousand.
Eleven thousand left. Don't be spending it.
I was gonna say, I also generously put an presentation in there. Uh, I think that's where you guys should review that, the other budget that we didn't fill through, because it's a dollar a doc, was the indexing part of that. So with that being said, indexing with that technical piece of it would be up to fifty three, eight five, and that's just marriage license as well.
So if I had you guys do just my marriage license, it would be the thirty seven plus the fifty three.
Fifty three, a hundred?
Oh, no, no, thirty seven goes to fifty three.
Thirty seven goes to fifty three, so in the ARPA doc.
Right.
So you'll have, we, we put in the media indexing forty thousand dollar budget, if we run it, it's, and it's on demand, so if it's just one time. That she wants to scan just marriages and we run out of budget. Then they can start going back.
Index as far as you can, and we'll, we'll be able to from there and other like.
What do you mean? Them indexed at a dollar sheet or?
Oh, no, I thought you already said you were gonna do it.
I said, yes, I said.
So you have thirty seven, three fifty, the rest of it, find it out.
So is your fifty three. A total, or is that fifty three just for the indexing?
So fifty three thousand, so forty thousand of that would be for indexing alone, for us to do it, and that would be back indexed marriages all the way back to eighteen eighty two. For eighteen twenty.
Plus the thirty seven, whatever.
Yes.
Okay.
So the project would be closer to one hundred.
We're not gonna be having people walking in to ask for copies of marriage licenses that, that got married in eighteen eighty two, there's a cutoff for that too.
No, there's not. My marriage license aren't forever.
I'm not saying that. We're doing this so people can look this up online, nobody's gonna be looking up a marriage license for someone that got married in eighteen eighty two.
Well, when it's indexed, when it's indexed, all we gotta do is type it in and then it'll come up.
I'm just saying, we don't have to index all of it, right?
It's, that's all like based off your guys' budget, you can do it.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, I, I'm saying, I, I would be crazy to approve indexing all the way back to eighteen eighty two, nobody's gonna be looking that up.
You know what I'm saying?
Some people that are ninety are getting remarried, Facebook's are changed, everything. People are going and finding their long-lost high school sweetheart, I'm not kidding. Because her clerk's office is not the only one that I heard this from, we were at the auditor's conference, people were talking about this, so. Her clerk's office is not the only one that I heard this from, we were at the auditor's offer, conference, people were talking about this, so.
So you already approved a hundred thousand dollars for this, are you telling her, she can't go over fifty, and she can't go over fifty? Yes, I do.
You can get two thousand from your perpetuator. Okay, and then, and then if you don't use all of it, maybe you can do some back to Mandy, vice versa, whatever, you guys fight it out.
How about the estates?
The estates, start scanning the estates, if with this, okay, what, what, what I have left over from marriage license, we'll put into estates, and then we will still go ahead and do the index.
I'll help you, I mean, I can scan.
There you go.
Can I bring one last thing to attention? There's gotta be money.
One last thing?
Mandy also has the Bastion server, which is our, our hosted server offsite, so.
That's good, right?
She's set up for it, they may come to an agreement to, or share that one server between the clerk and reporter. They just need to legally sign a contract saying that once they're out of term, that the next set survives, and it's the same Bastion server that's supporting you guys up.
When they brought this to me, I asked them, before I left for conference, if we, since Mandy was already using it, if we could get a two for one deal. And so, but Mandy is using, her space is almost used up, and after her next scanning project, looks like she's gonna have to move up to the next tier, is that right?
If you were on with it, we would have to move up to the next tier, which would still, it would still be less on my budget and only about, what, maybe twelve, thirteen hundred dollars more than what you guys quoted for it at?
Yeah, and it just depends technically on how many gigabytes that it needs to store.
And we could divide it.
But it's broken down in pricing, especially in the official contract, it's broken down in pricing, um, but it's just by how many gigabytes that it's, it's gonna need to support.
But I want you guys and the commissioners to, and our attorney to come up with some kind of contract, because me and Mandy can work together just fine, but the best case scenario, we will only be in our seats for another four years. And I don't want, if the recorder and the clerk can't.
You can't commit anything past your term, you can't sign a contract that survives.
The commissioners can't say that this is something that has to be together?
No, it can't survive after their term, or their term.
Okay.
Unfortunately, I mean, I can't do that as councilor here.
It's a good idea. I, there's no reason why it can't be, so, all right.
Even the salary ordinance, everything we do, every year. We appreciate it, though, sir.
Absolutely.
We really put some smart stuff together, we appreciate that you helped save some money.
Thank you, thank you, guys.
So are we okay to sign a contract together then?
Yeah.
For us to be on.
Oh, between each other, absolutely, yeah, while you're, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and you can always have the incoming, like, once you know who it is and things like that, they can get involved in it, get parties started too, like, still work, work together. In fact, we encourage that, that there's continuity between elected officials when they leave, because we've had problems with that in every office. Doesn't matter auditor, treasurer, when there's, we'd love to see that those have better transition, continuity.
For sure. And so I'm, are, okay to go ahead and sign the contract with the luring, get this whole thing started?
But I am gonna be hearing from Rachel, Bernard always gets everything, I don't get anything.
And I'm okay to sign, those people can work as many hours as Rachel and I do, how's that?
Well, I'm, it's simply talking about Rachel saying. Now Rachel's probably gonna schedule a trip.
I'm sure. She's gonna use the fun that my office provides for.
I'm going to Martin's.
It's getting a little punchy now, so.
Yes, I'm getting tired too. They gotta, they gotta deal with Martin's, we can get sandwiches and food, Rachel is.
So.
Can we do Jack then?
That's what I'm saying, so we have Jack and.
We about that.
I, I, I don't know though, did you guys, you guys might have tabled that card system, I, I said EMS, but did you approve it or did you approve?
They will be, how are they?
Yeah. Oh, how are they, that's. I met with Jack on the side on this too, but as a fireman, I've used his cot many times, and their finger pinchers are wobbly.
Yes, so is ours.
He's, he's asking for, for, like, Howard, they're from Howard's time, so, and they, you know.
We got old. No, back in my time, we used in-home cots.
Oh, really? Okay, okay.
And that's probably where we got the cots we have, if somebody gave.
Saying you might have even given us this cot. You want to bet?
Is that the one, we just get one of them, Jack?
I said, that's exactly, um, I'm asking for money from the American Restful Plan for, I'd like to buy a new cot. The two we have, I checked around and tried to see if somebody could rebuild them, because they do rebuild them, but ours are too old, nobody's got parts for them anymore. Um, so I'd like to get this, this one, it's, um, it's heavy duty, Howard has dealt with this company before. It's, it's seventeen hundred dollars and approximately two hundred, two hundred fifty to three hundred dollars to ship. But it comes fully assembled, we, we get it, we go.
It won't last a long time.
Oh, it should, it should last twenty-five, thirty years, I mean, you know, we're, we're, we're averaging about a hundred cases a year. So it's, and when I put my first year, we only have fifty-three, so it's going up every year, and the numbers this year are astronomical, right?
Howard, do you remember how many cases you used to have back?
It varied between fifty and sixty.
Since fifty was usually kind of that, so it's kind of doubled since.
Absolutely.
The historic.
Well, since pandemic, you know, the, I think that's drug, or.
Overnosed.
The drug has to go higher, because people are bored out of their mind, or stuck at home.
Which, um, which one are we gonna take it from?
Arpa, uh, it'd be your loss revenue.
Yeah, we would, it's something we would have bought anyways, that's fine, because he has another thing too.
Yeah, and then, we just, we need some, uh, supplies, which are gloves, um, twenty-one gauge needles, medium duty body bags, and then we also need some of the bariatric, bariatric, uh, body bags.
We have quite a few, babe.
Yeah, and they are a hundred dollars a piece, so I, I figured two thousand dollars and, you know, added stuff in, whatever, you know, whatever, well.
Four thousand totally.
Four thousand total altogether, but that, even as the two thousand, I mean, that'll last, that'll last for a while, I mean, we're looking, you know, in the, even in the next year, that, that stuff will last though. I mean, and we don't, there's no fluff in there, I mean, that stuff we.
And the commissioners did approve, so if somebody wants.
Is there anything else you want?
No.
All right, um, I'll make a motion to approve an expenditure of up to four thousand dollars, part of it for a new, um, stretcher and the rest of, for various supplies, um, out of the loss rev, loss revenue proportion of the Arpa money.
Got a motion for taking from loss revenue to Arpa, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Howard, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Hey, Jack, you're an equalist, I have a full cabinet.
Oh, really? Now you say it, after we've motioned.
I raised my hand, so I.
Well, that's why you said up to, yeah, I did look at him, yeah, he does have a lot.
Thank you, thank you.
In fact, we might even have some in EMA too, unless you've been using those up.
I have not been using the EMA.
We need to do an EMA inventory together.
Okay, yeah.
You should know.
Yeah, are you, are you the last one?
This is it.
You're not asking for much.
It's pretty expensive.
I'm tired of making money.
Did you get the answer on whether these cards working with the others, that's a horse, you're after that. I, I thought he said he believed that, so I think that if we do, if we do make a motion, we should make a contingent on Richard confirming.
I'm trying to remember, because I, you, because I was, I remember setting them up, so that the two systems would work together, um, with the courthouse one, where they sh, they, they are fairly standardized, and the tools we have for these, for the courthouse system and the jail system are fairly customizable, you can actually go in and program it bit by bit to recognize a, a proximity card like this.
Do they use a two D barcode or a MAGX trip or?
It's a, no, I don't know what it is, it's like.
RF, RF?
Yeah, kind of like that, and they're all serialized.
Yeah, that's ones we got for getting the parking garage to work, same thing.
Um, are we gonna charge people though if they lose?
Absolutely, so in the.
We're gonna have a policy.
In the boat, it comes up to a hundred cards, but if you lose your card, it's five dollars apart.
They're gonna sign that.
Yeah, because the same thing with our hospital cards I'm getting from the court now, because they're brand new. We're getting four, and you lose them, you're paying it, you get one, you get the one, you lose yours, that's five dollars, five dollars. I don't have to go to the court and say, okay, cancel hers and what, I'm not paying for it, that's on you for.
We don't want to run out of cards.
So, so what, you're getting a hundred cards?
It comes with a hundred cards in the boat.
Yeah, so they're, so they're six dollars and forty-eight cents a piece.
They're six forty-eight, we're only charging five?
Yeah, okay.
Are you gonna charge six forty-eight, are you okay with that, Mark? Just charge six forty-eight?
Oh, no.
Whatever, they're seven, I don't know, seven?
Not that we're not gonna lose money.
Right, so in other words, Jill, please make sure it comes with this.
Absolutely.
Is it okay with you?
That sounds.
I hate to lose money on that.
I hate to lose money too.
Yeah, I agree, but the quote is five thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars fifty-five cents, it comes with a five door handles with scan cards for three bases, um, one base has three of them.
Labor also?
Yes, uh, that was included, um, the proxy reader will be here, hooked up to my computer, so I hire you new, you get a card, you sign for it, that's when you go live, if you lose it, uh, we're gonna charge you more than six dollars and forty-eight cents.
Uh, this was approved today by the commissioners, um, from Q cap.
Open Q cap?
Yes.
Okay.
So you guys can approve to do it, but you're actually gonna have to do an additional appropriation formally later after a couple of.
Yeah, sure, yeah. She'll bring us back, we'll sign it, which was what we agreed to do, so. Are you, you're saying you're making a motion?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion that we go to court for the new door, door handles and key cards, um, for five thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars and fifty-five cents out of Q cap.
Now a motion, is there a second? We have a second from Kay, and I will just go back to one piece of discussion on that very fast, and we'll get out of here. This just goes back to the fact that we did that with the Q cap, so that we can work with commissioners, that we will be forced to do our jobs too, it's our jobs to be spent. So again, I will say this, that has nothing to do with punishment or anything like that, or, I mean, kind of, anything against the commissioner, we're gonna work together on these things, so I just wanted to note that, because it seems like there were some questions about that before, so. Motion, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Is there any opposeds? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I should ask you anything. Back to the commissioners meeting this morning, I think I'll talk down. Well, I wanted to talk about.
Me too, I made thirty motions.
I wanted to talk about. I used to swim there when I was a kid.
You do.
At that spot.
You do.
Yeah, I always thought it was bigger, like I said, I, I wouldn't see us putting a pavilion on that road, it is too narrow for.
Yeah.
But as far as the beach, I'm sorry, those people can keep arguing, it, it, the other thing about it is, is all the other property that are supported in the beach, so it has a lot of legs, that's a bad. Yeah, I don't want to break attorney client privilege, talk too much about it, but, you know, it is what it is, and I have spoken in public, and they. I like your.
Likes the beach. You need a motion? See, a motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn, please.
See you, Brad, see you, Anita. Why did I fit this picture, Anita?